Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes ma'am. Dr. Chase.
Preza.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Presente.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Colors. Hudson. Good. Freeze it. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Colors. Ready. Trim. Ready. Cut. Ball out.
Before we talk about the approval of the agenda, I want to thank the joint color guard from North Stafford High School, Colonial Forge High School, Mountain View High School, and Brookpoint High School. It's the first time I can remember that we had, you know, a joint color guard. So, thank you all very much for coming. We have cadets Sagier, Schwartz, Regeling, Gibson, Brown, Scott, Schrader, and Gilli. And we, of course, thank all their leaders, which include Colonel Catherine Bacon and Master Sergeant Juan Mendoza. Now, there must be more than that if there's four. So, those are the names that are on my list. We thank all of the instructors for the JROTC and for all the work that you do with our students.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard, do you have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to amend it to move consent items, which is currently now section nine on the agenda. If we could move the consent agenda to after awards, or would you prefer it before?
Yeah.
Let's do it after our awards and recognitions, making it before our staff reports currently at number five. To make that number five.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of an amended agenda, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to awards and recognitions. We have a proclamation for student Alex Goshorn. Ms. Hazard, would you like to read this for us?
Sure, I was wondering if Alex and his scout master, Mr. Tim Mantz, could come forward while we read that. Come on forward, Alex. All right, stand right there so everybody can see you. And get a good picture, which is the good thing. Mom wants you to smile. This is a proclamation to recognize Alex Goshorn, whereas Alex Goshorn is a life scout with Boy Scout Troop 516 and a freshman attending Colonial Forge High School and is a part of the stat engineering program at North Stafford High School. And whereas, as part of Alex's requirements to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, he decided to execute a project that would utilize his engineering skills and support Stafford County Public Schools. And whereas Hartwood Elementary School has an outdoor nature trail and Potawatmak Village, also constructed by an Eagle Scout candidate in the past, which was used to enhance outdoor learning experiences that allows for hands-on learning. And whereas Alex decided to build a footbridge to enhance and provide better access to the Hartwood Elementary School Nature Trail and Potawatmak Village area. And whereas Alex coordinated all aspects of this building project, including writing the proposal, drafting blueprints, getting necessary approvals, obtaining funding, and coordinating and leading the volunteers to complete the work on the footbridge project. Whereas on October 6, 2018, Alex coordinated over 20 volunteers to complete the footbridge project. And whereas Alex's commitment to enhancing the learning environment in Stafford County Public Schools through his Eagle Scout project is to be commended and recognized. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County School Board thanks, recognizes, and congratulates Alex Goshorn on his successful installation of a footbridge at Hartwood Elementary School and wishes him well as he works towards his completion of his Eagle Scout rank. So, congratulations, Alex. Thank you very much. And for all you other potential Eagle Scouts, there's lots of projects in that county.
We're very proud of Alex Goshorn. Great young man, future leader for our country, and we like doing projects, Eagle projects, for the county, but especially for the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scout master me.
Next, we'd like to... Next, we'd like to recognize Cherie Johnson, Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. I am here this evening to thank the community partners that teamed up with the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement to help the SCPS Operation Warm More Than a Coat Campaign to be a huge success. Community Engagement Manager Cherie Taylor led the event, which took place on October 25 at the Courthouse Community Center. Approximately 40 volunteers sorted and delivered over 1,000 new coats to ensure that all Stafford County Public School students in need are warm and prepared to succeed. Laura Wineski, Associate Director of Community Programs of Operation Warm, traveled from Pennsylvania to support this event. For the first time in several years, SCPS took the lead in this community engagement effort. However, collaboration with our stakeholders is key. We couldn't do it without our community partners. We raised over $20,000 with the help of 65 individuals and community partners, some of whom are represented here today and many others who could not attend. Thank you to SCPS counselors and staff who assisted with the coordination to make this event a success. Thank you to Stafford County Government Parks and Recreation for providing the location for this event. I would like to say a huge thank you to the communication team and Mr. Larry Fox for moving all of those coats to the community center. Lastly, I'd like to thank Outback Steakhouse, an official business partner with SCPS, for providing the delicious steak and egg breakfast for our volunteers. At this time, I would like to recognize our community partners. Representatives, please come forward when your name, business, or organization is called. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. Give Back Team, Realtors of Caldwell Banker Elite. The Stafford Rotary Club. North Stafford Rotary Club. Apple Federal Credit Union. Sylvan Learning Center. Atlantic Builders. Walter B. Hom. Stafford Education Foundation. Wise Markets. Express Technologies Incorporated. Sorensen Gross Construction Services. Stafford Crossing Community Church. Outback Steakhouse. And Stafford County Parks Recreation and Community Facilities. Again, thank you for your support, and we look forward to many more partnerships in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Johnson, don't go away.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Once again, it is my pleasure to announce the employees that have provided between 25 and 45 years of service to Stafford County Public Schools. These are employees representing all areas of service in the division, and tonight we say thank you for all that you have accomplished and all that you will continue to accomplish in the future. We will announce the employees in categories of years with 25, 30, 35, 40, and 45. Plus, take a picture of each group. At this time, I would like to ask our employees with 25 years of service to come forward as we present the service pins. Nancy Seams, Anthony Burns Elementary School. Destiny Bradshaw, Anthony Burns Elementary School. Robin Hayes, Brookpoint High School. Dewey Reynolds, Brookpoint High School. Rita Fercheck, Conway Elementary School. Larissa Bowling, Child Find. Willard Simple, Edward E. Drew Jr. Middle School. Kathleen Byers, Ferry Farm Elementary School. Christina Barnett, Head Start. Tyler Newton, Anne E. Moncur Elementary School. Karen Richardson, North Stafford High School. Samuel Musselman, Operations and Maintenance. April La Force, Park Ridge Elementary School. Sandra Green, Park Ridge Elementary School. Daniel Beverley, Stafford High School. Kristin Knott, Stafford High School. Kathy Mason, Stafford Middle School. Carol Dexter, Student Services. Ann Adams, T. Benton Gale Middle School. Nancy Zoller, Windin Creek Elementary School. Kathy Marks, Transportation. Terry Funk, School Nutrition. Deborah Heberly, School Nutrition. Farah Murmagadham, School Nutrition. And Nancy Seams is actually with Margaret Brent Elementary School. Can you get a group photo? Thank you. Thank you. Employees with 30 years of service, please come forward as we present the service pins. Diana Burgess, Dixon Smith Middle School. Rocky Roberts, Dixon Smith Middle School. Robin Nessakowski, Garrisonville Elementary School. Charlotte Carmichael, Grafton Village Elementary School. Jane Simon Peachtree, Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. Dr. Jim Stempel, Mountain View High School. Kimberly Shaw, Rock Hill Elementary School. Susan Whitehead, Stafford High School. Patricia Fredette, Stafford Middle School. Julie Barth, T. Benton Gale Middle School. Dreama Born, Transportation. Marilyn Gammon, Transportation. Deborah Kennedy, Transportation. Brenda Shomo, Transportation. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, employees with 35 years of service, please come forward as we present the service pins. Betty Rupert, Grafton Village Elementary School. Bonnie Browning, School Nutrition. Mrs. Pamela M. Cale, Associate Superintendent for Instruction. Mary Alice Robinson, T. Benton Gale Middle School. Thank you. Employees with 40 years of service, please come forward as we present the service pins. Joan Darby, North Stafford High School. Linda Shockey, Stafford Elementary School. Winona Sigmund, Stafford High School.
Thanks very much.
There you go.
Here, I'll squeeze it together.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Shall we give her a pin?
Congratulations.
Should she get a pin?
And last, but certainly not least, 45 years of service.
Hi, I hope she's here.
And this goes to Suzanne Gill, Stafford High School. Well, Mr. Lewis is here. Maybe Mr. Lewis can come and grab it for her. He'll make sure she gets it.
Maybe.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to all of the employees for their service to SCPS. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase and second by Ms. Young. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Kizner, do you have any... Need to report?
Superintendent...
Isn't it Middle School?
No.
Yes.
Oh, no, on the consent agenda.
Oh, I see, thank you. So, tonight you just appointed two assist... Thank you, take care of me. Tonight you appointed two assistant principals. I think Ms. Sullivan's here. Is she here? Oh, I thought I saw her earlier. Ms. Stephanie Sullivan will assume... Where is she?
I think she just stood up.
Oh, Steph, come closer. Ms. Sullivan will assume the position of Assistant Principal of Mountain View High School. Ms. Sullivan's currently the 10-month Assistant Principal at Rodney Thompson Middle School and has been in the role since 2014. Prior to becoming Assistant Principal, she taught math at Dixon Smith Middle School for four years and was also a homebound tutor. So, congratulations and welcome. You got two for one with her. Very lucky. And I don't know if Mr. Ralph is here? Oh, you're here.
You guys just met my second-grade teacher today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, this is, Mr. Ralph will assume the position of Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities at Brookpoint High School. Currently, he's the AP at Brookpoint and has served in that role since 2007. Prior to becoming Assistant Principal, he taught social studies there for nine years. During that time, Mr. Ralph also coached football, girls' basketball, girls' and boys' track and field. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to staff reports. 5.01, Middle Schools Class Size Report. Mrs. Cale.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. I stand before you tonight to provide you with the Stafford County Public Schools 2018-2019 Middle School Class Size Report. Of course, as you already know from the elementary report, the data for this report is based on student enrollment in core classes as of September 30, 2018. To assist with the analysis of our class size reports, the Office of Demographic Planning provided the projection analysis report as of September 30, 2018. Based on student enrollment as of September 30, 2018, the total number of middle school students was 6,932, which is an increase of 235 students over the September 30, 2017 student enrollment. We were 123 middle school students over the projection. Compared to the 2017-18 school year, we increased the number of classrooms by adding 1.5 FTEs to core academic areas. This table shows an increase in the number of classrooms from 1,067 to 1,093. The number of classrooms increased by 26 when compared to the 2017-18 school year and increased by 46 over the last three years. In addition, our average class size increased by .6 from 25.5 last year to 26.1 this year. This chart depicts the core classes by department and classroom averages at each school. The average class sizes for each department are as follows. English 25.4, history和社会 studies 26.8, mathematics 26.8, science 26.3, and world language 21.6. Please note, world language classes are not required at the middle school level. However, all other core subjects reported are required. In comparing our average department-level class sizes this year, we decreased by .8 in English and stayed the same in world language. We increased by .9 in mathematics, 1 point... Excuse me, we increased, I hope I said that. We increased by .9 in mathematics, 1.2 in history和社会 studies, and 1.2 in science. Please note that this does not reflect three positions added to middle school since September 30. One position was added to Gale Middle School, that was a math position, and two positions were added to Drew Middle School. One math and a .5 science and a .5 social studies. As you can see, the section span shows the impact of our increased student enrollment and its effect on middle school class sizes. Many of you have already mentioned the need for lower middle school class sizes. Just as elementary numbers have decreased, when the school board approved the elementary staffing standards with a critical... With a continued focus on middle school, we will be able to decrease middle school class sizes. Decreasing middle school class sizes will be certainly our priority for next year when examining our middle school staffing methodology. As we prepare for the 2019-2020 school year, we're reviewing our middle school staffing methodology to meet the demands of our increasing student enrollment. We look forward to working collaboratively with the school board in reducing middle school class size. At the next school board meeting, we'll be presenting the 2018-19 High School Class Size Report. Do you have any questions at this time?
What are... Hi, Ms. Cale, this is a good presentation. One of my questions was, what is the plan in reducing the middle school class size?
HR will be working certainly with our instruction team as we look at the methodology. They had worked on a formula last year that they were not able to do due to funding, but they're looking at new ways, whether it's... I don't even want to say it right now because somebody will hold me to that. So, I'll just say, I'll be a little vague and say that they're looking at some ways to look at setting a certain number and saying maybe plus and minus a few because it's very hard just to say that we have a cap at the middle school level.
I thought I saw on Table 4 that Drew, HH Pool, and Rodney Thompson, they had 28-plus students, so that's something that you're all going to be working on, I guess?
Yes, we do have an increased number of classrooms this year at 28 or more students, and that certainly is not, as we know, what we aim for. We certainly, obviously, in the perfect world out there, we would have very small, extremely small class sizes, but in our educational system, we aim for between that 21 and 27. And this year, unfortunately, that decreased and the other increased.
So, first, thanks for putting this data together for us so we could take a look at it. And I'm thrilled to hear that Drew Middle School has gotten a couple more teachers because they had 75% of their classes at over 28 students.
Yes.
The highest in the county. And given that it's 43% economically disadvantaged, that's really kind of a problem. It's also a concern to me that Drew has had the highest class sizes for three years running. So, it looks to me like there's a methodology problem, that three years straight we've had the highest class sizes. And then I'm also just wondering, looking at our projection analysis, do we need to look at redistricting for AG Wright, Rodney Thompson, and Drew Middle Schools? All of them are getting very close to full, and there are schools near them that are... seem to have space, so just something for us to think about.
HH Pool's close to Rodney, and there's no space at HH Pool.
So, those are my comments. But again, thank you very much, and I would really appreciate it if somebody could give me the new numbers for Drew class sizes after adding two more teachers.
I had some more questions, but I just wanted to give anybody else time.
Sure.
Ms. Hazard?
I have a few.
Let me just finish one and then I'll give you room. World Studies, I can't remember which table it was, but World Studies were kind of... Are they combined classes? What... World Language, yeah, World Languages, I'm sorry. Are these combined classes or... One of them was... One of them was kind of high, and then the other ones were low, so I was wondering if the one that was high, was it somehow more than one class together, or, like, how does it work?
We will have to check. The people, the folks that helped me with this are certainly, are Mr. Nichols and Lisa Boatright, in addition, obviously, to our technology team. We can look into that and let you know. I don't think it was combined, though. I don't think it was combined.
Okay. Correct. Does all of them, like, look normal except for that one was kind of high? So I was wondering if it was a combined class. Table, Table Two.
It's right here.
That's three.
No, it went up to there.
That's Word Language. Yeah, Word Language.
Rodney Thompson.
Rodney Thompson's 32.9, and then everything else is like teens, 13. So I was just wondering, what was that?
And part of that may be the interest of the students in the schools. Because I remember when-
That is very true.
Back when, when my daughter was in middle school, all the students who wanted to take foreign language were not able to take it because of restrictions in the number that could be in a class.
Either the foreign language or the teacher. Okay, thank you. Holly?
Sure, I have mostly comments. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. I know, though, over the last two years, and I know Mr. McCosker, Ms. Healy, actually, Ms. Egan, we remember, we had identified middle school about-
Yes.
-a year or two ago, and there was a plan that was going in. Can you describe, well, you don't maybe have to describe that plan, but is it that we're going to tweak that? I just want to make sure I was understanding what, what the methodology going forward along the lines of what Dr. Chase was saying.
Well, there are two. One is still going back to the middle school schedule.
Okay.
And they're working on that as a team, and they just met this week. So that'll be news to come. And in addition, what I know Ms. Boatright and Mr. Nichols worked on last year was a formula, and they can better describe that for you if you need that. But at the time, due to funding, we couldn't implement. So we're looking at some other ways this year to present to you all.
If I could just say, and I don't know the answer, I've heard the number 1.5, but somebody would let me know if that's correct. To go to a question that was asked, what is the plan? This is a partnership, because if I understand correctly, only one and a half new positions were budgeted for middle school. So when you saw the, is that?
That is what, we had growth positions budgeted, but that was what was given to middle school when they looked at all of the growth. And of course, obviously, we have to follow the elementary staffing standards for the caps. So with that in place, that's how that they ended up exactly right, though, of 1.5.
Exactly in that vein, and so I'm going to be saying this to my colleagues on the Fab. I have heard, and please, no disrespect meant, that, well, we couldn't do this because of funding. I will tell you, I don't know if I was ever advised, we are cutting five positions because we can't meet this. And Mr. McCosker, you and I were together last, you know, during that thing, and I don't remember that. And, you know, maybe it was buried, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, but from my perspective, the more concrete that can be said, that's a trade-off that we need to say to our community, whether we say we are increasing class size, whether we say we are cutting positions. Because from my perspective, this is all really interesting, and this is great data. But I will tell you the number, and it's harder to do with middle school than it was with elementary, and I did it with elementary-
Yes, I agree with you.
Was count the number of teachers. I would like to know, in, last year, we had, I have no idea, 432 middle school teachers. A year later, we have 433, 427, or 450. That, to me, gives me a better idea of where that allocation is. Dr. Kizner was saying, because how I feel that the positions are brought to us is we have growth positions, and they are just said 15 positions, or 20, or 30, or 50, but not in that. And from my perspective, and maybe the teacher number isn't helpful, but for me, I'm not like some of my colleagues, math is not it. But I can tell if you had 431 year, and the next year you added two, we may not be moving real far unless, like you said, the companion piece of the schedule. So that would be helpful. As I said, I will say that to my colleagues on the Fab, but I would be looking for that.
We can get that for you.
A little foreshadowing.
We can get that for you. And I apologize, I want to make sure that I'm clear. I'm not saying you all have certainly identified over the past couple of years the need for middle school. When I say budgeting, maybe I use the wrong term because basically, I'm talking about the positions given, and we know budget is very difficult and lengthy process, and you all work extremely hard, and have been dedicated to making sure that our class sizes have been small. But still, as I said, with the staffing of the elementary, it pulls X number of positions every time. We can look at that.
Can I ask, this is probably one of those that you say, well, that's not a stupid question. When you say you add a .5 position, to me, is that a current instructor takes on an additional section? Does that mean that we have more itinerant people moving among buildings? And I know it can be varied, but when I hear a .5 position, it's sort of like a .5 student. I'm like, well, I have to say-
No, actually, that's a good question, good question.
Thank you.
But currently, and correct me if I'm wrong back there, but the .5 positions will be a halftime position. Now, once in a while, we do have to tweak that. We have with world languages, as you know, or some other things, but right now, that's what we're looking at.
Ms. Egan?
Well, Mr. Nichols has been working with his middle school principals, and they're certainly working on RTI, Response to Intervention, which is certainly something we won't be talking and sharing with you later, but working with our tier levels, et cetera, and to making sure that all students are receiving the assistance they need. And so with that, they're working on developing a schedule that will help allow that. Well, I can let Mr. Nichols-
Sorry to have my mic off.
Or I can just tell you that, in addition with that, and whether when we're looking at our schedules, and building principals, they need to do what is right for their building. And sometimes, and we all have talked about this before and a few years ago, about with math, et cetera, that some principals have chosen, and like I said, it's their building, and they know their students, that maybe there will be more students in some of the higher-level classes, and then they purposely make some of the other classes less. And that's part of their choice when they're doing that. As far as with the scheduling, Mr. Nichols, did you want to?
Well, I really think that's going to be on a future agenda item. It has to be flushed out. I mean, more than happy to have them come up, but-
Very true.
That's fine, it's just that if it's, if it's being, you know, mapped out to us as, you know, as a fix to what we're dealing with here, people that are watching are going to ask questions, so I wanted to get just a little bit of background on it.
That's not going to be the fix. If your objective is lower class sizes, the question I would ask you to think about is, there are trade-offs. So if you're seeking, I would like to believe that the schedule that each of the middle schools will have is designed around children learning to the highest levels. And I would say so, I'm going to say something that I know is not going to be very popular, okay? But I'm just going to say it. Class size does not guarantee that to occur, okay? So if the, if the whole discussion's going to be lowering class sizes, we also got to be honest with the public that doesn't necessarily correlate, surely not a causation, to student performance improving. So the RTI model, I believe, is trying to hit that objective of proven student, improving student learning, but it's not designed around the notion, it's not going to adversely impact class sizes, I will tell you that much, but it's not designed, people who implement RTI do not design it to lower class sizes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here, because what it almost sounds like to me is that we're going to be taking some opportunities away from kids to reallocate teachers and stuff like that. And I just want to make, we've, we've done a heck of a job with trying to have parity within the school division. I just want to make sure that that's not an option for us, to take programs and, you know, break up RTI, you know, the intervention classes in order to provide for the advanced classes. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I can absolutely agree about class size, but when class sizes at one school, 75% are 28 or higher, and another school, only 25% are 28 or higher, then I have to wonder what we're doing, okay? I don't have a problem with higher class sizes if we agree that that's across the board. But if some schools are getting a short shrift, I have a problem with it.
I have one more question in terms of class size. So in Table Three, I know this is a static report, and it's wonderful, but I'm wondering, you know, if we could drill down sometimes, because I don't know, like, what questions you're trying to answer. But with, like, so I'm trying to figure it out, Table, is it Table Three? Yeah. Or Table Four, actually. So you have, like, Dixon Smith, it says 28 or more students, 37. I'm trying to figure out, what class is this that there, is that the way you read it? 28 or more students, and then the number's 37 across, it's Dixon Smith Middle School? So are you saying that there are 37 classes that have 28 or more students?
Am I looking at the right, the chart?
Class, you're looking at the class size report.
Class size report. Just trying to understand how to read it. Wrong one, sorry. Sorry. Class size report, the first one. Yeah, Table Four? Can you give him some water over there?
This one?
Yeah, how do you read that, yeah?
Well, it says 28 or more, for example, Dixon Smith, is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
Dixon Smith has 37 classrooms with 28 or more students.
And Rodney Thompson, 94.
Yes.
HH Pool, 74, and Edward Drew, 61.
Yes.
So is there a way that we could tell what classes they are, like, you know, they're all?
We can pull them, yes, as far as-
Trying to get you to do more work, but it's like, it's, like, if we could drill down, that would be, you know, to know which classes these are, that are 28 or more, but, yeah.
We can get that.
But they are all the core subjects, right?
It's all the core.
Yeah.
It's all the core, plus world language.
It's math.
Agreed, but it's not PE.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
In some of the middle school classes, there was some chatter about not having the regular general education teachers being the key teachers in those classrooms, that there have been reading specialists, there have been focus teachers reallocated to kind of help bring down class sizes. Is there any truth to that?
There's some, excuse me, there are some schools that use their staff in that way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And those are, of course, counted in here because it's coded as an English class, or whatever.
All right, I just wanted to make a comment. I appreciate this report, and I think what it does is bring the board's attention to the need to focus on giving additional staffing of teacher positions to the middle schools. We have made a tremendous gain in the elementary schools, and I think it shows in that report, but it may have been in part at the cost of the, the middle schools. If we've, we've set some class size standards, or, for the, for the middle schools, did you say we have those?
We are currently working on devising something that we think could be possible, and it may take a few years, just like, obviously, the elementary standards, et cetera.
Right, well, if that can get to us before we start budget, at least intense budget discussion, I think that would be very helpful. Because these, these disparities are, you know, pretty significant. I'm looking at the 28 or more students, and they range from a low of 37 to a high of 94. And there can't possibly be parity when you have over twice as many classes in one school with 28 or more than, you know, the lowest school. And the other ones aren't even that, that close. So I think that would be a good thing for, you know, us to keep in mind, and maybe our Fab can, you know, take a look at that for us, too.
And it would be nice to see, you know, what classes there are.
Ms. Healy? Yes. Exactly in the vein, sort of that you're talking, I think something we also have to, you know, that the projection analysis was attached to this agenda item. The interesting part to me is, we grew in middle school 3.5%. Don't use that 1.8, that's not, it's over, and I went back and looked at last year's, and we grew 2.2% in middle school. Conversely, when I ran it for the, for the elementary school, it's not even quite 1%. So I think that there's something we also need to, to look at, is, many people have heard me opine about the new housing that we are offering in Stafford, maybe bringing people with older students to Stafford County. But I think we need to start to recognize that. And, Dr. Chase, you can argue with me on this one, but I believe, and so this is probably more for our planning folks, in the past, right or wrong, with elementary, we pulled out our pre-K. I'm looking at some of your, the numbers at Drew Middle School, and I'm thinking, is it also that we may or may not, and please know, I don't know, have space if we were to create additional, implement whatever comes forward? What if we go to Drew, as you have said, in elementary school? Here's the staffing standard, we are out of room. Drew is rather unique, in my opinion, that I'm wondering, I'm sure Matt and Scott Haran are hiding from me, to have an asterisk on Drew with regard to capacity of demonstrating that there is capacity at that school, is being used for the private day school, no comment, but we may get to a point where that may need to be pulled out for our funding body. Because, and Dr. Chase, I'm just, that struck me.
And what I would note is that Dixon Smith is at about 74%. So another solution is to redistrict in order to lower the numbers at Drew.
And I'm not saying not to, but I do think at some point, we might want to have that bifoc, or however they did it, on there of saying, that is a unique use of Drew, and should some things on Trusslow Road go the way they may be going, that is a feed into Drew. And, like I said, redistricting, ugh, I don't really want the redistricting bug, let's just be honest.
Oh, we've already got it.
I know, but, but I'm just saying, I think that's something, and I think we as a board, and hopefully, when our projections come to us, which I know we're expecting, I think we have to look at that trend, not to use the wrong word, but 2.2 last year, 3.5 this year. Elementary's very much around the one, and I just think that that's a story we need to be telling, and it goes to our CIP and building usage and staff. It all is combined.
Are you planning on going over the other documents?
So I guess that was just a comment, sorry.
I finished.
She did the staffing report.
Oh, okay, because, all right.
I mean, I could say one last thing. You know, because we said the word Drew a lot today, so I'm always curious when we see these patterns. So if you take 1617, compare to 1718, Drew had one of the lower numbers of classes of 28 and higher, and then it jumped up. So to me, these are really architectural, not architectural, building design. And it's what you guys, I think, were talking about. Program design, maybe some focus of, of the staff with the administration. So I guess what I'm really sharing with you is that when I look at these patterns, 1718, for some of the schools, something happened. Maybe our, maybe our counting method was different. I mean, that's another thing, we might have counted wrong in 1718, or, no, we would not be counting wrong today this year. So I don't want us to overly react on this year, because last year, if you had the same report, you were probably feeling pretty good. Based on how it's such, we went from 38, we went from 53 at Drew in 1617 to 38, up to 61. And I don't want us just to react on one year because we didn't do that last year, I imagine.
Let me jump in there real quick, since, it was a good discussion, though. I learned a lot, so. Just real quick, the projection analysis charts that I see, elementary school, it looks like it has program capacity for its 2017-18 numbers, and then the rest, of course, are, are the building capacity. So I don't know, that kind of just threw me for a minute. I was confused on the numbers there. So I just hope we don't continue to use program when we already voted on design, right? The whole program. The second thing is, so, you know, that, that's good to hear. I know that the, you know, the schedules, that's hard work on the schedules. the schedules, that's hard work, on the schedules for middle school. That's, if we do go into our sessions, and just like we did for elementary schools, and we say, hey, we need, we want to get class sizes down to a cap of twenty-whatever, and that's going to cost more people, which we may not be able to fit into the Rodney Thompson, the Drew, the Winding Creek, you know, whatever that school is. Winding Creek's a bad example. But, so that would mean redistricting for those high-performing middle schools. That a lot of times, that the folks don't want to, they don't want to entertain. They say, go away from my school, it's, we're doing great here. So, those are some of the hard things to consider. It's not an overnight, it's not an overnight fix. But, yeah, I mean, if we do lower the schools, we don't have the room in them, then we'll have to move them to schools. Dixon Smith does have plenty of room. So, and it's an outstanding school, and it's about, not even a mile away by the crow flies, right? So, that's one fix. And so, anyway, I'm excited to move into the discussions on this topic. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I have one.
Ms. Young, one more question.
Yeah, I had one more question. So, my question that I had on this projection analysis, the two thousand seventeen numbers, was that based on design capacity, since we didn't discuss program capacity back then? I don't know, I'm just asking.
School and highs, we haven't changed it yet. Elementary's program.
Okay, so it's design?
Middle school and high school.
Okay. Design.
Old program.
High school. And so, the September thirtieth is design. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to... Yeah.
Is this the latest design that was approved, or the latest program? It doesn't look like it. Because I didn't think we had any schools over a hundred percent capacity. When we applied the...
So, I'm confused.
Right, the numbers that match what we are actually staffing for.
Yeah, this is the old elementary program. That's what we're using, right? That's why I brought it up.
Why?
I said...
No, why are we using the other one?
Oh, well, that's another, that's the second question. So, why? Why is it up there?
Okay, okay, all right. Okay.
It's confusing enough, we're trying to simplify.
Absolutely. So, the reason why the two thousand seventeen eighteen program capacity was carried over was because the two thousand eighteen nineteen, this year's program capacity, had not yet been calculated, at the time of this report.
Okay, that's why I was asking.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, if anyone else has questions, please send them to Dr. Kizner, and he will share the responses with all of us.
I'll answer them the way I want you to know it.
No, you wouldn't do that.
And we appreciate our fab looking into this as part of when we're looking at our budget priorities. All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Cale. Sorry you're on the firing line, especially the night you get your pen, but you're a survivor, obviously, after thirty-five years, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to five point oh-two, the FY nineteen quarterly financial report. Mr. Fulmer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Try to make this quick, and then let you guys ask a couple of questions, if you have any. First, this is just a high-level overview. We're very early in the year right now, so one of the attachments will have the actual, some of the actual numbers, and you'll see, some of them may only be, for example, expenditures are only about seventeen percent. So, first quarter, obviously, we're roughly twenty-five percent through the year is what this report is representing. But understand that included in that is the summertime, and then there's also some areas where we buy ahead, you know, first purchase for the whole year, whether it's material supplies. So, some accounts may have higher percentages than others, but that's nothing to be alarmed about. So, just wanted to point out that it is early. And one of the key items is our ADM number is what we track, as you just saw on the previous report. But our budget ADM was twenty-eight nine thirty-four. The September thirtieth enrollment was twenty-eight nine oh-five, so we're in line. The budget ADM is based on the state ADM, not necessarily our projections. So, state revenues tracking as expected, sales tax on the report will show that a very small percentage is collected, and that is normal, as it's usually several months behind. Federal revenues are, we have very small in the operating fund that are federal, usually just impact aid and some of the ROTC stuff. But, so, the impact aid typically comes mid to later in the year, so there's very little federal revenues, but it's tracking as expected. And same with our other revenues. Expenditures, salary and benefits are constantly being monitored, and especially the laps, but, once again, early in the year, so we can project a little bit of there, but the actual lapse is not incurred until we continue through the year. Most of the other expenditures are tracking within the accepted variance. I just wanted to point out, we do have some contracted services, and this is a usual thing, that areas that we're unable to fill, and that we can contract out due to requirements for compliance. We do transfer the savings from that empty position into our contracted services line, so we start with some money in our contracted services line to cover increases over what we budget for the individual employee. Just wanted to point out, the psychs and the speech paths specifically are some of the areas that we have transferred money out of those budgeted salary lines into the contracted services lines. And that's an area where Ms. Bowright and Ms. Johnson and I have met on several occasions to talk about ways that we need to address those going forward, to try to fill them, but they are very tough positions to fill. So, just wrapping up, the quarterly report shows just our FY nineteen activity only, and years past for board members that have been on the board. Sometimes there was an overlap of prior year activity that has crossed over into the new year. The new system does allow us to exclude that activity and only look at activity that's impacting the current year budget. So, it makes it a little bit cleaner. And I've just attached the quarterly PowerPoint presentation that the board supervisors was provided last month. And so, I will pull it up. I know it, these are just the numbers for revenues, and then each of our functional categories. I'm not going to go over each line item. This is a format that you are familiar with.
Chris, before we get off, Madam Chair, pardon. Chris, before we get off that, just real quick, Dr. Kizner, we try to make sure that if these reports go over to the supervisors, that just give us a heads up, so when I get a call from my supervisor that, hey, I'm looking at your quarterly report, and I haven't seen it yet, that's usually not a good conversation when all board members are caught that way. So, just, I know you're busy, just make sure we get them.
Yeah, yeah, and I have not provided this to anybody on the county side. I always provide it to you guys first.
Oh, I thought you said you sent the quarterly report over to...
No, no, I have, I included the county's quarterly report that they had, which excludes ours.
My apologies. Okay, sorry.
Yep, no problem at all.
I still like my point, but...
Because we might do it another time.
I'm still right. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Not guilty, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have them, you know. I will make them short. I was intrigued what you said about ADM. What is a state ADM number versus what I think of as our ADM number? And maybe it's because it's an average, and they are assuming throughout the year that we will increase over time. Because certain schools, I know, increase. So, I'm just trying to understand what a state ADM number is, and maybe you've explained it to me before, my apologies.
No, you're fine. So, the state releases the average daily membership, which is taking into account the fluctuations during the year. So, they budget that our final ADM for the entire year will be twenty-eight nine thirty-four, is what they expected in the FY nineteen budget. And so, we always use the state's numbers, because that matches up to what the state will give us in revenue. So, when those numbers go up or down, the state would adjust that after the March thirty-first enrollment numbers are reported, and they come out with a final budget, or final average daily membership that calculates our final payments from the state. We use, sorry, we use enrollment numbers, so what we reported on September thirtieth, obviously, that's not going to be the same number we have every day for the rest of the year. So, we have to report to the state, I believe it's monthly, of our actual enrollment numbers, and they take those numbers and smooth them out to come up with the average daily membership.
Could those reports be provided to the board, if you're providing them to the state? Because it is interesting to see how the numbers fluctuate throughout the year, because I think certain schools, that is really important. So, that helps me to understand that ADM number. But, so they do take into account, let's say, we hit December, and all of a sudden, everybody wants to move to, well...
Correct.
Maybe, hopefully, they don't come with a car. But, you know, let's say they all come, so if it kind of does spike mid-year, are you telling me that the state ADM number can reflect that change, or is it, like, a year later, it reflects? You know what I'm saying? Because some things are sort of in arrears.
For instance, if we added thirty kids midway through the year, they would count as fifteen on our ADM. So, they would increase our enrollment, our enrollment number would go up by the fifteen, not the full thirty.
The state payments get adjusted in, after the March.
Correct.
So, right now, after the September one, they have a number that they're giving us monthly. And then in March, they'll determine if they gave us the right amount, too little, or too much.
And they notify us in June of what our final payments will be for FY nineteen at this point.
Just my final question, I'll be done. When you have on that sheet, adopted budget versus adjusted, if I understood you correctly, the adjusted budget mostly is in, and like I said, I only have just seen this, so I'm doing a quick scan, is in the salary lines. And you were saying, the reason that those salary lines were moving, you know, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, is they would be moved to other staff-type positions, but they are called something different, like a...
Absolutely.
A contracted service, or...
Where we have to contract with an agency to fill, most commonly, our psych and speech path positions, because they're required. So, we're unable to fill them, so we contract out. We have some money budgeted in those contracted services lines to begin the year, but it's not enough to pay for, we only budget enough to cover the increase of what the contract is going to cost, other than the, over the salary lapse number. So, we take that vacant position, we move the budget related to it into the contracted services line to cover the remainder.
Because just looking at those two columns, that's a change of five hundred thousand dollars from our salary line to something contracted. I mean, that's, you know, I'm not, it's just a comment.
And it's been an increase this year over. It went up some last year, and it's continued to increase this year.
Something we should, I mean, anyway, that was just the thing that I noticed the most.
On a positive note, our legal fees have actually leveled off. In the prior years, we were kind of busting that budget, and we haven't done that this year. And part of that was specific.
Don't jinx us.
I have one question.
Yes.
Under technology, thank you, Madam Chair, under technology, what is the difference between the purchase services and the materials and supplies? So, say, for example, if teachers are at a conference, technology, something to do with technology, does it fall under here, or would it fall somewhere else on this, in this budget?
If a gen ed teacher is at a conference, it would fall under the instructional line. If we have, like, I TRTs or the T, C, or, sorry, TRTs or CTTs, they could fall under this technology line. But our gen ed teachers that are at a conference are typically going to fall under the conference travel fees line for the instructional category.
Instructional, and so, the difference between that purchase service?
The purchase services is going to be, like, software costs for the whole division. So...
And then materials and supplies?
Materials and supplies would be, are most commonly, it could be, any technology that costs less than five thousand dollars is going to fall under there. Anything greater than five thousand would go under capital outlay. So, replacement computers, all our cyclic replacement fall under our materials and supplies lines.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. Will anyone else have any questions? All right. We'll move right along to citizen comments.
Thank you.
We have fourteen people who have already signed up to speak, and after that, we will invite members of the audience to speak if they wish to. But because we have such a number of speakers, we will need to keep to that three-minute rule here. Mr. McOscar isn't here, so I will read the blurb. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation of the chairman. We will call the people who have pre-signed first. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation, if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose slash topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes, with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy eleven thirteen, public comments. I'm going to call the first four speakers, so you can line up, and then we'll call the next four to try to keep this on track. There's a little stoplight there. The green starts the three minutes. The yellow tells you there's one minute left, and the red is when time is up. The first speaker is Jenny Nativedad. The second speaker is Philip Nativedad. The third speaker is Annika Nativedad. And the fourth speaker is Franco Dickey.
Greetings, members of the board. Dr. Kizner, my name is Jenny Nativedad, and I'm here before you in my role as a mother, a nurse, and a type-one diabetes community leader. I'm the mother of Annika Nativedad, that'll be speaking shortly. As a mother, I'm asking for safe passage for my child at school and receive a free and appropriate public education. As a nurse, you expect your employer to safeguard your practice, train you for your position, and allow you to practice within your full scope, but most importantly, to keep your clients safe, and that's what I'm asking of all of you. As a community leader, I'm asking for additional actions towards a positive and trusting relationship with the school administration and nurses, for it's crucial for the safety and education of the students with type-one diabetes. As a result of our struggles as a family, we have been leaders in new laws and state legislations that we have not seen implemented, but are very much needed in this school, and require swift resolution. Carrying needed supplies, treatment of low blood sugars, plans for lockdowns, trained use of reinsertion, and reinsertion of the medical devices are just a few of the immediate needs. Thank you to the school nurses who attended a working group meeting with the parents to work towards making these improvements. And thank you to Dr. Kizner, for, we would like to present you with a certificate from the state of Virginia, recognizing November as Diabetes Awareness Month. This came from the governor's office, and we're very proud. And we also have some, tomorrow's World Diabetes Day, and my husband will explain that in just a little bit. But this is an opportunity for Stafford County to lead the way. I ask you to give the families a voice, to keep current, and to promote collaboration, for it is the children of the families of these decisions affect most. We look forward to these improvements, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Philip Nativedad?
Good evening, Phil Nativedad, one twenty-six, General Breeze Circle. Good evening, Stafford County School Board. I'm here today as a parent to speak on the need for better-directed health services for type-one diabetes, T1D, in the schools. You'll also hear from others regarding their own direct experiences with administrators, teachers, school nurses, and other school employees. Some of these interactions have been very good, but other interactions have been unsafe health practices for someone with T1D. Something in common for all children upon their diagnosis and return to the school environment, or, in some cases, entry into kindergarten, is the need to provide safety and publication, the same is for all our schoolchildren. Tomorrow, November fourteen, is World Diabetes Day, celebrating the birth of Frederick Banting, who discovered insulin and insulin injection therapy that saved the life of my youngest daughter and millions of others every day. One striking thing, though, is even though T1D is increasing in populations worldwide, it's possible that, at any given moment, one school might have no students with T1D, or so they think. The point I will make is that there are times, these times are just as much in need of a baseline level of T1D awareness and readiness as the times when they have known T1D students. There needs to be county-wide actions in place for the increasing numbers of students being diagnosed as T1D at any time. If a child unknowingly has T1D, their blood sugar levels can be extremely high, five or six times higher than normal, and in danger of fatal diabetic ketoacidosis, or DKA. On the other hand, after diagnosis, if eating later than intended, or given large amounts of insulin, blood sugar can drop so low as to lose consciousness. At these early stages of low blood sugar symptoms can be noticeable and corrected with simply a juice box and a solid snack. However, some school situations, such as emergency lockdown, are a special concern. Although in our case, we provided small emergency food kits for each of our daughter's classrooms, P.E. classes, course volleyball, special... Uh, although in our case, we provided small emergency food kits for each of our daughter's classrooms, PE classes, course volleyball, special activities. Uh, this does not to be, be, appear to be a standard practice, which is concerning. Uh, another example, students may need to shelter in place for an extended time in inclement weather or other disasters, and T one D supplies and routine care would be needed. Schools need to be planning ahead for emergencies before they occur. In short, T one D children have been lost to both extremely high or extremely low blood sugars. We're asking all schools to be better prepared, trained to recognize the symptoms, and provide routine and emergency care. T one D is deceptive, it, it can be an invisible quote unquote disease. Uh, but with increasingly more common mainstream and effective medical treatments, T one D students can do exactly the same things as all their peers. We urge you to provide the necessary physical health, academic health, and medical health services as part of an equal, free, appropriate public education for all our students. Thank you.
Next is Annika Nativity Dodd, followed by Franco Dickey.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Annika Nativity Dodd. In January, I will have had diabetes for eight years. I was the captain of the Colonial Forge freshman volleyball team, and I sing in ladies' corral. Uh, last but not least, I am in the Commonwealth Governor's School Program. Sometimes I really need a break for my diabetes care, but there isn't one. It's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, there are no breaks. Currently, I am in a medical diabetes trial for some very intuitive, very new technology at the University of Virginia. I had a continuous glucose monitor or a CGM and an insulin pump before the study, but they were separate devices that did separate things. The experimental technology is amazing. I say having experienced life with and without it. It's a CGM and an insulin pump that communicate in one device. They work together to make my life at home and at school much easier. The CGM continuously samples my blood, my blood sugar, and tells me not only what the reading is right now, but it can predict where it will be in a few minutes. The pump takes that information and doses precise amounts of insulin on those calculations automatically, just like that. This makes my load so much lighter and does a better job than any human could ever do. This differs from a single shot of insulin in many, many ways. For one, a shot is a one-time thing. You manually draw up the amount of insulin and you give the shot. It's a set amount and, and it's a one, one and done sort of deal. This device, however, operates on its own. It can predict where my blood sugar will be and act accordingly. It takes trends from past experiences, what's happening right now, and what's bound to happen in the future, all into account. It reacts to the slightest changes in my bloodstream, just to keep me healthy. This has a tremendous impact on my overall health as well as peace of mind. It essentially replaces my pancreas, the organ that bailed on me when I was seven. Actually, just last Thursday, my CGM site failed at school. This is, this meant that it had to be reinserted, reinserted as soon as possible. I was without readings, without a magic blood sugar correcting program, and without anything, really. I was completely in the dark for what my blood sugar was for almost four hours. Luckily, my family and I had prepared for these situations before school started. Luckily, uh, I had a backup CGM site at the school, and I took a couple of minutes out of my lunch period to stop in and reinsert my site. It is incredibly easy, literally the click of a button. It took only a few minutes and I could do it all by myself, but the nurse looked on just in case I needed any help. It's not unheard of for a site to fall out at school, but it's not great or convenient for any party involved. It might be a slice of cake for me, but my friend Bella, which you hear from in a few minutes, needs someone trained to reinsert her pump or CGM.
Um, anyone who would like to submit their comments for the, uh, record can give them to our clerk, um, Ms. Hall at the end of the podium here. Um, the next speaker is Franco Dickey, followed by Yolanda Dickey and Isabel Bella Dickey. Must be Isabella with you.
Yes, this is Isabella. Hello, my name is Yolanda Dickey, and I'm at fifty-eight Liberty Knolls Drive. I'm a disabled Marine Corps veteran, and I'm also the proud parent of Isabella Dickey, who is six years old and in kindergarten, attending Wyandcrink Elementary School. Our daughter was diagnosed with type one diabetes when she was three years old. Overall, the support and the interactions we get from my daughter's school have been very good. I would be lying if I didn't say the other interactions have been unsafe health practices for someone with T one D. There are so many topics I would love to discuss this evening, but due to time constraints, the two topics I would love to address today is needed services, such as battery changes and infusion set, change, set changes for kids who need full-time care and understanding how the treatment and monitoring devices work, such as a continuous glucose monitor or CGM. My first topic, we were told on numerous occasions that the nurse were not able and not allowed to reinsert her insulin pump due to county policy. We didn't understand the ramifications of that meeting until it happened one week after school started on Friday, September fourteenth. On September fourteenth, my daughter insulin pump failed, it was not reinserted. And the school nurse decided to put my daughter on a bus to her aftercare program. By the time I reached, my daughter's blood sugar had increased from one, from a normal range of one oh, one oh four to four sixty-three due to an insulin pump failure. As far as battery changes, this seems to still be an issue, and I honestly still don't understand why. Why do we have school nurses telling parents they will not change the batteries, and they were actually allowed a pump to die because they're being told by their higher command, their bosses, they are not allowed to? My last topic is treatment and monitoring devices. Changes so nurses should know and understand how those devices work. For example, the FDA approved and permitted the Dexcom G six for making decision, diabetic treatment decisions with zero finger steps and no calibration. But you still have nurses finger pricking three to five times a day because they don't understand how the devices work. In summary, every job requires training. Some jobs require quarterly, annually, and semi-annually. This should not be any different for school nurses. Parents should feel that we, parents should not feel that we have to be on pins and needles or have to be on call to reinsert a insulin pump or just change two batteries. There will be times where a parent cannot make it back to the school in a timely fashion, and a school should not be able to, and a school should be able to meet any type one diabetic's daily needs and not cause unnecessary emergencies. Thank you again for allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabella, want to speak to us?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Isabella Dickey, I'm six years old. And it's easy to take off a pump, you get alcohol, and then you just wipe it off. And then it's easy to put a P E M batteries in, you take off the casing, you put two batteries in. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, did Mr. Franco Dickey want to speak?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, the next speakers are Tina Burlison, Tracy McGee, and Emily McGee.
Greetings, Chairman and Superintendent. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Tina Burlison, and this is my daughter Brianna Fitton. Um, we're from Spotsylvania County. Uh, we have ran it, she has become a diabetic as three years old. Excuse me, she is now sophomore. Um, we have run into issues as well. In elementary school, we had incident where the school nurse mixed up the, the, um, the Lanson device and took her, took another kid's Lanson device and pricked her finger. And I wasn't calling till later on that afternoon. And Brianna was the one that called on, but it had already been pricked, which means another needle of a kid went into her skin. And then when we got into middle school and she became on another pump, we've had issues with it failing. Every time that it failed, I would have to leave work and go to her school, which is, takes me more than an hour, Tom, I get there, change her out, and come back. Um, it would definitely help if these nurses, if we could get them on board and, um, learn how to change the setup. One, it would keep the kids in, in their classes longer because she has to sit in the nurse's office until I get there, change her out, and get her back. So that's time that she's wasted, that she could be in class. So there are more and more kids being diagnosed with this disease. And I just asked that if we could help our nurses get trained more on board and, um, to help. Now she can change herself out, so it definitely helps, but there's a lot of kids that can't and need help with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristen Shaw. Tracy McGee is not able to be here, but I do have her statement, is that okay if I? Is that all right?
Sure, it's, you'll need to sign her in when you finish.
Tracy is signed in.
But you'll need to sign in when you finish, there's a, a sign-in sheet there.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, so Tracy McGee has a daughter Emily, she is seven years old, and she was diagnosed with type one diabetes one year ago. Since the diagnosis, Tracy has encountered several issues at school that she feels needs to be addressed. It's obvious there's a lack of knowledge with substitute school nurses and teachers. And she wants to discuss the severity of hypoglycemia and not having a knowledgeable nurse or school staff in general when these terrifying moments happen. So she wants to talk about two frightening incidents that took place in her daughter's school. The first was last year, shortly after Emily was diagnosed. Tracy, uh, her daughter Emily has a Dexcom, so Tracy was able to watch her numbers, and she could watch on the Dexcom as the numbers steadily dropped. She called the nurse office and the substitute, who, uh, so a substitute nurse, and she, um, the nurse said that she gave the daughter sugar-free Jell-O and string cheese and didn't understand why her sugar was not going up. Tracy explained that she needed carbohydrates to raise her blood sugar. Tracy did not, the nurse did not know what to do, and she did not know what to get for her to eat. So Tracy walked the substitute nurse through it. As soon as the, she hung up the phone, the nurse called right back to tell her that her daughter had finished her snack and that her sugar was still not going up. She wanted to give another snack, and Tracy said, no, you have to follow the rule of fifteen. The substitute nurse had no idea what that was. With hypoglycemia, you need to give a fifteen carb snack, wait fifteen minutes, and then recheck. So needless to say, Tracy had to leave work early, go pick up her daughter, because now her daughter's blood sugar was at sixty-three. The second terrifying incident happened just one month ago. She was watching her daughter's blood sugar again on the Dexcom, and within twenty minutes, she was at thirty-two, a very dangerous low. She called the school nurse, another substitute nurse, and Emily was not even in the office, so she was still in her classroom. So the nurse had no idea that Emily's blood sugar was low. Instead, um, the classroom teacher had asked Emily, Emily, what do we need to do? Emily, again, recently diagnosed and a young child, was a little unsure. So the teacher gave her thirty-eight carbs, okay, so instead of fifteen. So Emily rebounded to a, now a dangerous high of four hundred. The nurse ran down to check on the daughter, on, ran down to check on Emily, and Tracy and her husband ran to school because now they're afraid for their daughter. Sure enough, when they got to the school, the daughter is in the nurse's office, eating another snack. So she'd had about fifty carbs total, so way too high, and it took all the way until the next morning for, um, Emily to get back in range. So Tracy just feels that there needs to be a mandatory class, um, just like there is for CPR, and there should be emergency hypoglycemia kit in every classroom in case of a lockdown. Thank you.
Could you give us Ms. McGee's address?
I do not.
No, it, it, that's part of what we ask for, is it Stafford?
I don't know.
Her address?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it on me.
Is, is her child in Stafford School?
No. No, Tracy.
Spotsylvania, okay, thank you. All right, Emily McGee, is, is Emily here? I, I know you spoke for Tracy. I guess she's not here. All right, the next speaker is Eliza Vallow, and followed by Brandy Quirk.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is actually Jessica Vance, I'm speaking for Eliza as she is not in today. Um, my daughter Amelia is in fifth, is in kindergarten at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary, and she is also diabetic. Um, my address is one eighteen Mayfair in Stafford. Um, so I'm here representing for Amelia and all of the other diabetic families in the area. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and read Eliza's statement for you. Our lives are defined by moments. We take mental snapshots of significant life events. Our first date, our first kiss, our wedding day, our birth of our first child, and so on. These moments define the way that we live. One such moment happened when my son Ethan was diagnosed with type one diabetes at the age of three. It was December two thousand thirteen, Christmas time, a time of the year when all is supposed to be joyous and merry. But for our household, we were sitting in a hospital room trying to wrap our minds around a diagnosis of an incurable disease that will ever, forever change our family. The sleepless nights, the worry, the adjustments, and the knowledge that the decisions that I make could kill my child. But every day, by making those same decisions, I save my child's life. It is bittersweet. I am a, I am not a healthcare professional. I am a mom, a mom with a responsibility so grand, it's impossible to wrap your mind around all the management that this disease entails. Blood sugar checks, carb counting, pump site changes, insulin adjustments and dosing, and those are just the main tasks that we take in every day in addition to the already thankless job of being a mother. The children didn't ask to be medically fragile, they didn't ask for this disease, it just happened, and we don't know why. Sending our child, our children to school is a particular source of anxiety because we believe there should be no difference in the quality of care that our children receive at home and what they receive at school. Our, our children are beyond, are mature beyond their years because they know that any mishap could lead to a serious complication, or they could die. Our school nurses and staff are incredibly important in maintaining the standard of care for our kids. They should retreat, they should receive the training and authority to care for our children like we do at home. Should a site pump become dislodged, the school nurse should be allowed to assist our children in replacing those sites. They should know how to stop the insulin in case that the blood sugar drops to a dangerous level. Having glucagon stocked in our schools is just an extra layer of protection that ensures that our children are safe at school. No one should see their children laying in a hospital bed because of a nurse's inability to treat their child's needs or a staff member's lack of knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vance. The next speaker is Brandy Quirk, followed by Jeffrey Trigger, Dana Brown, and Paul Wildowski.
This is my little eagle. My name is Brandy Quirk, I reside at one three two Stables Side Lane, George Washington District. I'm here talking about the Ferry Farm rebuild. So, um, I found the version ten large capital project, um, list for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-nine CIP. It was dated eleven, seven, twenty eighteen, version ten. Um, so I added all up these numbers, the renovation phase one, nine point nine, one point eight over budget now. The eight point zero four five million for phase two and, uh, phase three, two, four, and twenty twenty-nine for ten point three seven nine million. That totals twenty-eight million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. We know back in twenty fourteen, we were going to get a new school and it was going to cost twenty-five million. So now that's all changed, right? If you add that three R infrastructure for the FFES CIP, I've included those, um, copies for you, it gets you that four point six million, it gets you to thirty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-four. And you'll see in that FF, FFES rebuild and renovation found on the government site, sorry, there's no date, someone posted it without a date, but you could probably look at the server when it was posted, kind of get an idea. Or the, um, Assistant Superintendent might have a date for you. Um, so it says the open day of twenty twenty-two is thirty-eight point eight million. Wow, how about that? So you add up all those renovations and the, the infrastructure, that three R infrastructure list, and it gets you to like where we would be for the twenty twenty-two. Okay, so now, moving on, I got that nice little photograph for you. It was taken on November, and November eighth, I marked it on the back, taken by me. And, um, there was a question with regards to the, um, emergency, uh, excuse me, the educational, um, specifications documentation. It says on the website that this is provided for people to build and blah, blah, blah. You can find it on there, but here's where it ends. It says, "The, the consider these guidelines in conjunction with the Stafford County, um, Public Schools Facilities Design Document." Here you go. So this picture is just to point out one thing, and I gave you a copy of that. The faculty, administrative, student, and visitor parking areas need to comply with, um, providing areas of parking outside of maybe like public streets. We do a lot of public street parking at Ferry Farm Elementary School for all of our events, and then some. and then some. And then we have these wheel stops being mounted, approval is an exception. If you take a look at that picture, I drive an extra-long Ford F-250. They've got to have a camera on there. I would hate to see someone roll back or hit the gas and go forward on that.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, and look forward to seeing you again.
You're welcome. This is a good conference to Ms. Hall.
Thanks.
Jeffrey Trigger.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Trigger, and I live in the George Washington District. I speak to you tonight as an educator within the county. In the following few months, the county will have to make some enormous decisions about the future of our schools. Some of these decisions will have an immediate impact, and others will be more gradual. Some will be popular, and some will no doubt leave a bad taste in the mouths of residents. And you will have to remember that decisions have to be made for the greater good. The first decision on your plate is going to be school redistricting. No matter what decision you make, I know it won't be popular with many people. However, the time has come, and worrying about max capacity is unacceptable. I'm going to give my opinion here. Development in the county is going to advance quickly regardless if you decide to build schools or not. I can assure you, we cannot wait until the 2030s to build new schools. We will need to be honest with ourselves and start planning for this growth now. The second decision on your plate is the salary plan for all the employees of Stafford County Public Schools. I support SCA and the 5% salary increase suggestion for all our employees. Pairs get no breaks and oftentimes have to reteach material to groups of students. Bus drivers are the bedrock of all of our students, ensuring the safety to and from school. Cafeteria staffs feed hundreds, if not thousands, of students every day. Our custodians make our schools inviting every day. Office staffs make our admins look great and do a lot of paperwork so the teachers don't have to. Speaking of teachers, the number of new teachers we have to hire seems to grow every year. No ifs, ands, or buts. Salaries need to reflect the respect of all employees. The last decision you're going to have to make is actual policy for all students regardless of race, gender, religion, or LGBTQ status. Our students deserve respect, and our staff deserves direction. We can make Stafford County a first by enacting such a policy. Led Zeppelin has a famous song with the lyrics, "There are two paths you can go by, but in the long run, there's still time to change the road you're on." Let's put Stafford on the right path. Thanks.
Dana Brown, followed by Paul Wadowski.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I'm here tonight because I want to ask you to defer approval of the high school course catalog tonight. Last meeting, you were asked, well, you asked staff why they would bring it to you so early, and I think you were told something along the lines of, "Well, because we're starting school early next year." Well, that's true, but we're not getting out early this year, and we're not registering kids any earlier. And occasionally, we've waited to approve this course catalog well into the new year. I have a couple of reasons for requesting this. The first one is it's based on, for previous years, I think some staff members may think that it's a way to preempt any program reductions you might be planning for next year. They figure if they get it in now, maybe they don't have to put it off for another year. Second is we are still experiencing load balancing problems with our master schedule, big ones. And this could be what's hindering you from getting a new high school. You are not utilizing the space you have efficiently. I've been requesting the master schedule for the last three years, and it's revealed that many classes are under the minimum class size. And every year, you guys talk about that, and staff tells you, "You have to have 15 to make a class." The teacher load and the student load are way out of balance, and it's very unfair for teachers. Some have huge teaching loads, and some have very small ones. I shared this with Dr. Benson when he was here, and each year, Dr. Benson said it would get fixed, and he told you, the school board, that staff was going to undergo retraining of the master schedule over the summer. Well, after it wasn't fixed the first time, Dr. Benson made them do it a second summer. He was not happy about that. Then the third year was this past year. It's still not fixed. We did get a new guy. Maybe they figured they could go back to their old ways, because no one was watching. But we are offering way too many classes with not enough students to fill them, not enough to make a class. And just so I'm not misquoted again, this is not special ed classes. This is causing us to waste a teaching position and a classroom, and as a result, it's forcing overcrowded into, more overcrowding into core classes. And this might give parents a false perception of overcrowding in the school. I barely scratched the surface of the reports, which this is, this is how big they are, and I want to share a few examples. In some of our high schools, we have a classroom, Classroom 601 has a class with six students, a class with 14 students. Classroom 112 has a class with five students, yes, five students, 10 students, eight students. Room 315 has a class, another one with five students. 327 has a class with 10, a class with 12. And I could go on and on, but I'm running out of time. One of the things I really want to make clear is that we have some teachers teaching 144 students, and then we have other teachers teaching in the high 30s and in the 40s. That's not right. We got to fix that.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
My entertainment for the week, Paul Wadowski, eight pick and win. The selected chairman of the 2030 cicadas, who I now know that some of them have type 1 diabetes. You know, insulin's got the word in and at twice. I keep telling you, the word "in" is important, because our students need to take Latin. An "in" is in the word "brain," and I leave it at that. I keep seeing all this data, but it never formulates into information. Golly. Maybe we need some dimes to go with the rickles that we're using in this methodology. I keep hearing about redistricting on November 1, Virginia, 2012. January 1, school away. There's not going to be seven of you, I promise you. There'll be five of you, and one will be an elected school board member. They already took my model. It's pretty interesting. I spent my day at Election Day. I've never been to Ferry Farms before, but I really enjoyed the talk about Ferry Farms. I'm 61 years old, but schools are built for the last 100 years. Get with the program, folks, but listen to your members. There are facts. It's not fake news. On our election day, there's a blue puddle that hit the red wall. You know, move happens, things are changing. Just fascinating what's going on. I had a very neat speech at the Board of Supervisors, oh, I mean Supervisors, excuse me, I had a fart in sweat last week. And our school bus drivers are running red lights, and national tragedies have happened. And I told you about Bus 48, it's not a problem. Bus 47 could probably teach 48 to use the cul-de-sac. I also brought up to you about Vbat. I'm tired of the high schools in the area who don't have the sign. Well, plenty of wet weather. Give me the authority, I'll pull out the sign. No problem, I'll move it. I would have did the sod in my yard. That's what nature's here for. And one final thing, your methodologies are so terrible. You need to use what are called integers, because human beings aren't .5. Yes, .5 is good for part-time employees. That's a nice number, but human beings are not .5. I will tell you that, trust me, even when someone loses a leg, they're not .8.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? I'm sorry.
I know, I spoke for Tracy.
Oh, I, well, we only have one per person. Sure. All right, we'll close the public comment period and come back to the board for Student Discipline Committee report. Mr. McOscar.
On October, on October 18th, the committee of the board met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee permitted student A to participate in the regional alt-ed program. For student B, the committee lifted the expulsion effective at the end of the first semester of the 2018-2019 school year, and converted it to suspension for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year, which is held in abeyance, conditioned upon the student being of good behavior while attending school.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. That brings us to school board committee reports. Now, this is for committees of the school board. If you want to address advisory committees, you can do that in your board member comments. We have one school board committee that has met since our last meeting, and that's the Finance and Budget Committee that met on November 1st. Do you have a report for us, Dr. Chase?
I do. We heard a presentation from the Stafford Education Association at our last meeting, and I want to thank Ms. Decatur for facilitating this. They gave us their rationale for lobbying for an across-the-board 5% raise. This would cost the school system about $11 million. To put that in perspective, last year, the school system received a $10.5 million increase. If this were going to be paid for with real estate taxes, the tax rate would have to be increased 7.3 cents. The owner of a medium-priced house would see a $215 increase in their annual real estate tax. Mr. Fulmer then presented us with the teacher market comparison. The good news is that our teacher salaries are currently right at the median of the market for our eight comparison divisions. The bad news, I asked Mr. Fulmer to present us with how we compare with just Spotsylvania and Prince William Counties. I requested this information because when teachers leave Stafford, they go to Spotsylvania or Prince William. They don't go to Albemarle or Chesterfield. We are nowhere near the middle of Prince William and Spotsylvania Counties' salary scales. In order to get to the middle of this market, we would need $22 million, and that would just cover teachers and no other employees. So that's the bad news, but we don't fix things if we don't look at the problem, and so that is the problem that we have. And then we talked about the CIP, but I believe that's coming for action, so maybe we can hold that conversation till when we get there. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That brings us to board member comments. Ms. Egan, would you like to start us?
Sure. I wasn't going to say much, but the first half of the agenda was so exciting, I just wanted to say. I want to personally thank all the folks who got awarded their pins tonight. That's quite an accomplishment, especially in this day and age, not too many people stay in jobs for a long time anymore, so kudos to you guys. Mr. Ralph, you're going to make an awesome AD. I don't know if you're watching or if you're home celebrating, but congratulations to you. Alex Goshorn, congratulations, and thank you for your contribution. And one last, Pat Fredette, who is a civics teacher at Stafford Middle School. She did her 30-year pin today, tonight, and she's amazing. She survived two Egan boys, so congratulations to her. And just a note, that CIP Advisory Committee is meeting this Thursday, provided the weather cooperates with us. So that's it. Thanks.
Dr. Chase.
Sure. Whoops, there we go. It's been a busy month. I was invited to judge eighth-grade debates at AG Wright and Drew Middle Schools. My three children all participated in this, and it was great to see that it's still going on. I was so impressed with our students' performance. Their hard work showed, and I want to thank Mr. Long and Mr. Washington for inviting me to participate, and I want to wish all the eighth-grade students good luck if they're participating in countywide debates tomorrow night. And I wish I could be there, but I'll be with my fellow board members at the Annual Conference of the Virginia School Board Association. I had the opportunity to meet with parents and teachers at Falmouth last week to discuss the upcoming elementary school redistricting and the budget, and I think it was good discussion. I want to thank Katie Willis, the president of the Falmouth PTO, for inviting me. If there are any other PTOs or PTAs for schools in the Falmouth District that would like me to come by, just let me know. Last Wednesday, I was across the street when the Board of Supervisors announced that Stafford County has now achieved a triple, triple-A bond rating. This is great news, because it means Stafford will get the lowest possible interest rate when borrowing money for construction projects. So it has taken 12 years to reach this goal, so way to go supervisors and county staff. Then Saturday, I participated in the Stafford Education Foundation 5K Run Walk. My husband and I walked. Miss Young beat me, but funds from this event will go to support our schools. And then finally, November is Take Your Legislator to School Month. Today, I toured Grafton Elementary School with my state delegate, Bob Thomas. I want to thank him for taking the time to visit our schools and educate himself about the issues facing Stafford County Public Schools. And of course, thank you, Principal Sidebotham, for being such a wonderful host. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard.
Let's see, I'll start off with the thank yous. That's always the nice part to start with. Thank you, of course, to our wonderful staff members, those who have the 25-plus years. It's always wonderful to see them. I always think that those who are in transportation and you have over 30 years should get an additional something. I'm not sure what. So, but thank you to all of those who were there. Also, I want to thank you, thank those who have served, our veterans, and especially, I'd like to thank our schools for the wonderful programs. There were a variety of programs that went on through our school district. I had the honor to attend Rocky Run Elementary, and Delegate Thomas came and presented the award that Rocky Run was not the only school that, about being a Purple Heart and military-friendly school, which is such a wonderful honor for us and us recognizing as a school district with our proximity to Quantico and the many bases in the area, that that's something we invest in, and I think that's certainly one of our worthy things that we do. So thank you to those who have served, and thank you for those who put on amazing programs. They always should put me in the front row, because when the kids were singing the song, a little choked up, I will say. Mr. McOscar, you can say that Mr. Thomas had a little, he was a little, you know, wow, he said, "That was great singing." So anyway, that was, that was absolutely wonderful. I was not trying to just get out of running on the Stafford Education Foundation, although I could see the eye, but I was, had the wonderful honor to present to Stephen Dean and be at his Eagle Scout ceremony that morning with Mr. Cohen, who also presented something to Stephen. And that was just a wonderful opportunity to see our kids excel outside of our school district, because part of what makes them amazing people is what they learn within our buildings, but are they taking it out in their community? And just want to thank all those Eagle Scouts and all those scouts who do that. So those are all the fun things. I'd just like to also mention something. I know that the board is coming back at some point about what our metrics are going to be for redistricting. I know we have mentioned free and reduced lunch data as being at least a point of information. I don't know if that's... I would really like the board to also consider our ESL population and that percentage within some of the schools, having looked at some of the ADM reports from, in the past, so I could only speak somewhat to those. But I think that that is also something we need to recognize, having heard in the schools and from teachers that many students now are coming at an ESL level, I think they call it a Level 1. And that is a lot of services for our students, that we need those pull-out spaces and those pull-out space challenges throughout our buildings. And I believe that we need to make sure when we redistrict, we do not redistrict to something that we potentially handicap a school that has certain needs within it that needs additional space. I know I've spoken in the past saying, maybe some of those schools need to have a lower percentage when we're looking at the distribution, but I would just ask the board to consider free and reduced lunch data, obviously we've spoken about, but I think that ESL data might be also instructive to us. I know that we did have a speaker speak about, speak poorly of our bus drivers, but I would like to actually do the reverse. Our bus drivers are challenged every day by cars passing them, and I know that is one of our legislative priorities. There has been some discussion. Senator Vogel actually reached out to me, because Folkeer, Loudon, all the places that she represents have these as their legislative priorities. So just want to say, we're hearing you. This is actually, I have been told some bus drivers have started a petition, because they are so concerned. So I just want to say, we hear you and are looking into it. I'm looking forward to going to the Virginia School Board Association and meeting with other colleagues who have these programs in their, in their school districts. And finally, just attended the Board of Supervisors Revenue Projection Presentation. I think there's a lot of information that we, as a board, need to examine, and will give us some real clues of where we may be in the sp- us some real clues of where we may be in the spring and some of the arguments we need to be making to increase that number.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Decatur?
Good evening, everyone. I got back at about 2:00 today from a 20-hour drive from Key West with two children. If anyone's ever considering doing that, I don't recommend it.
How old are they?
Yeah, three and six months. That was fun. Thank you to all of the teachers that were awarded with their pins this evening, as well as all those that have not made it there yet but are pushing their way through, sticking with us in this county. We appreciate you and everything you do. I don't take it lightly that I sit up here and make a lot of the decisions that greatly impact your everyday in our county. We appreciate you. There was one more thing I wrote down. Oh, right, yeah, so that's why I'm always honored and more than willing to open up any avenues of communication. So, thank you to the SCA for coming, presenting to us. I don't recall hearing them talk about raising taxes as part of their... I could have missed something, but I think they had some really great ideas as far as revenues were concerned. And anyways, I'm eager to see what Dr. Kizner and everyone come up with for the budget presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Good evening, everyone. I also want to thank all PIN staff and those not pinned as yet. That was a joke. Anyway, I attended the Technology Advisory Committee. I wasn't sure if I gave an update last time, but I did want it to make it anyway. Met with Mark, Principal from Stafford Middle, and also met with the ITRT and the CTT. We had presentations from several teachers. Kudos to those teachers. Kathy Mason, sixth grade math. Kim Andrews, sixth and eighth grade English and reading. And Sarah Hawa, eighth grade math. So, we also had student representatives, which is really great. Emma Devine, ITS and IS student intern, and Jared Neese from Virginia Star. He's the Star President. Looking forward to going over to the Technology Strategic Plan. Oh, he disappeared. Okay. Oh, there you are. Yeah. Looking forward to getting it so we could go over that. Additionally, over the weekend, I attended the Stafford Education Foundation 5K also with Ms. Sarah and Dr. Kizner for a little bit, and it was to run to promote food drive as well as benefit the SEF using the funds for innovative teacher grants, classroom support, and student scholarships. Thank you, Walter, also, Cherie and her team for putting this together, and also those students from Mount Vernon. They were Mount...
Mountain View.
Mountain View, sorry. They were amazing almost at Mount Vernon. And also, Band Together to Fight Hunger, that was on November the 5th, 2018, so that was a great success. We raised a lot of money, and I'm sure food banks can use more as well as canned foods, more money as well as canned food for this upcoming holiday season. So, that's all I think I had. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. McOscar?
Okay, thanks. Congratulations to the PIN recipients. Good job. Keep up the good work. Tom Cohn, Mr. Tom Cohn is our supervisor now for the elected supervisor by the people for the George Washington District.
For 10 months.
And then he has to rerun again for the next year, so he's got a lot of fun ahead of him. But I wanted to pass on that he was officially into the position. He was, the election is official as of today, and he wants to be sworn in at Colonial Forge because he is a teacher at Colonial Forge High School. He wants to be sworn in at Colonial Forge at 9:30 next Monday, and he wants to offer the extended invite for all the school board members. He would love to see if you guys will come, and I'll forward this email over to you. He would love to have you there if Dr. Kizner permits.
Only if we get 5% for the teachers.
So, you know, and what he says is, he says, "Hey, this is an excellent opportunity for my government students to see more about the government process." So, anyway, so congratulations to him. It was a good win. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. And I'll keep mine short for a change. Congratulations to all the PIN recipients that were recognized tonight, as well as the recipients who will receive their pins at school. That's the five, 10, 15, and 20-year employees. It is very... I don't know what to say. I'm very grateful for the service and your being with Stafford County Public Schools. We hear a lot about the turnover, but you can see that we do have staff who are with us for significant amounts of time, so thank you. You really do make a difference. And I have to say that when the bus drivers came up, I, you know, I just said, "I really admire what they do every day." I mean, those buses are a challenge, not just the bus itself, which I can't imagine driving, but, you know, the number of students in there and the paraphernalia that they have to bring, if they have musical instruments or backpacks or, you know, different-sized students that we have. It's incredible, and I think, I echo Ms. Hazard. I think we, you know, we hear a lot about the complaints about transportation, but not so much about how they are doing their job. And I think if you look at the statistics, you know, it's pretty much very high in, you know, what they're doing to get those 20, what, 4,000 or 5,000 of the, you know, 28 that we have. Well, we have 28,000, but, you know, there's...
About 14,000, 15,000 on the road, 230 buses. We're doing a great job.
Yeah, it's amazing. So, thank you, and thank you to our Transportation Director, who is amazing he has any hair, but he made it through the beginning of school, and I know, you know, I, you know, the, and I don't want to call them complaints, but the issues that were brought to my attention, I forwarded to Dr. Kizner, and they were resolved quickly and, I believe, satisfactory because I didn't have a follow-up, you know, from the people that made the initial inquiries. Also, I wanted to thank all our veterans, including Mr. McOscar, for your service to our country, to our community. We are very blessed here in Stafford to have a large number of military families with us, and I think they bring a lot to our schools and are very appreciative of their choosing to be in Stafford while their tour of duty is in this area. And also recognize what the schools do for those presentations. It's a shame it's all pretty much on one day because we can't get to as many as I think we'd all like to do, but it's great to see our students and our staff celebrating, you know, our military accomplishments and personnel. That brings us to the superintendent's comments. Dr. Kizner?
Thank you. I just got my two-month pin, so I'm getting better and better.
Oh, you don't get a pin for two months.
So, you know, there's so many things going on that I'm not even sure if we have even officially recognized, and you should be proud of it. I know in Stafford, we often make this accomplishment, but it's not... Good things happen by design and not-so-good things happen by design. That's one of my beliefs. So, all our schools are fully accredited, both at the state and federal level. Our on-time graduation rate continues to improve. Our dropout rate continues to decline, and all of the indicators are suggesting strongly that the people that we appraised tonight and the students that we're honored to have in most cases are being very successful. And there's other indicators, but those are the ones that were held accountable. I also want to just talk very, very briefly that we had our Equity Diversity Opportunity Committee. I'm not sure, I might change that name a little bit, and I had to get three people tell me what the name was. But, so, as I talk about the accomplishments, we also recognize that when we disaggregate the data, we do have some children that are not being as successful as we'd like. So, we are designing a equity dashboard that will help us, really, if you think of your car dashboard, you know when you're running out of gas, you know when your oil light goes on, you know if you have a low tire warning. It's an indicator that keeps reminders, reminding us on how successful either we're being or not being. And we've looked at three school systems, Arlington, Alexandria, and Harrisonburg, and we're kind of landing on the Arlington model, and we're having a presentation, I think, next week to learn about it. So, we'll talk a lot more about it, but we brought this up at the committee, and they were very excited, and we showed them what it could potentially look at, look like. I do want to quickly mention, so I think all of you, or most of you, got the book, End of Average. So, I would really encourage you to read it. You'll get a sense of some of the comments that I might be making, some of the comments that you heard tonight. Average is just one way as a descriptive indicator. You know, we heard a comment tonight, and again, I'm just making a comment on a comment. When we have classes of 10, 12, 14, 16, I would at least ask you to be thinking those children in those classes are benefiting. Okay? I have no idea what the classes are, to be honest with you. I have an idea of at least one of them because I had a chance to speak at one of those classes, and I could tell you, those children that I spoke to are benefiting from that class. So, if we just make a number and say, "We go above this number, the class should not continue," then I'm just saying that we're really talking about children and learning, and I would just ask us to keep that always, that our decision should be to be student-centered. Okay? That's what I'm asking. And then on the school website, we have the redistricting link, and our first meeting, which really was an opportunity to tell the public why we're redistricting, where we are today. But we originally scheduled this for November 29th, and two of our board members will not be in town. So, we are moving it to December 5th. But then we have scheduled meetings in January, and before we go send out flyers to parents announcing it, could you please look at the dates? Because we have them at middle schools, and if it's a middle school that you represent, and if you know you're going to be out, we'll switch it, okay? But we'd rather switch it now than send the information than have to reswitch. So, it's right on our website. Just go to redistricting. And we chose middle schools intentionally. It's this way, no one could say, "We picked an elementary school," and a lot of parents from that elementary school showed up, okay? Anyway, I'll just end it on this. I've had an opportunity, and I do thank Dr. Chase for going today. When you, and I know all of you do this, when you walk into the classrooms, you see exciting teaching and learning, and you see really great things that I believe if our public had more opportunities to observe what we get to observe, we would begin to see, and you have a lot of support already, but you would begin to see support accelerate because people like to support a winning team. I know that. I'm a New York Bet fan, okay? And being with the Yankees, I know what happens. So, I say this because I like to invite the public into our schools and see the excitement that's taking place. So, I think that will not only help us during the budget time, but I think it will help be ambassadors for the really good things that take place. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to action items. 10.01, approve the 2019-2020 High School Program of Studies/High School Course Catalog. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 10.01.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Hazard for discussion. Now, we can have discussions since we have a motion on the floor. Would you like to begin the discussion, Ms. Hazard?
One thing that I did see as we were looking at the program, which I wanted to just note for anybody who has, you know, certainly concerns, I'm sorry, my, this is sort of, my screen isn't going, but I believe in the write-up for this, it talked about that there can be changes made to this, to this, I'm sorry, it was in like yellow, but I can't get that, that screen to...
It's, do you want me to read it to you?
That would be great because I literally, oh, there it is. Now it's come up. Okay. It was really stuck. If changes by the Virginia Department of Education, the school board, or other affiliated organizations necessitate revisions to the High School Program of Studies, the revisions will be included in, as an addendum to the original document, and I think that's just something good for us to at least consider. I know, and I don't want to bring up a, you know, sore point with anybody, I know that there is still some, at least some, and I don't know how strong, for the firefighting program, for us to at least reconsider, to relook at it. We have a new fire chief. I have seen him in, on a back-to-school night, so...
Let me just touch on that. It's in our Program of Studies. I have met with the fire chief. You have been presented this in the past. It really will, I could tell you a preview. I will put this in my budget. It will be up to, you know, the next steps, but you, I just want you to be aware of that. It's already in our Program of Studies, so it will then be determined how, I understand, the county is willing to fund half of it and an expectation that the school system funds the other half. I don't know if you were aware that was in the Program of Studies.
I thought that it was, and then when I went back, I have to say, I was reading through, but I think that that's something still, though, important to say that, and that cuts both ways. There could be something in there that come, you know, the spring, we may move the other way. So, in some sense, it's glad it was in there, and that was the point, but I think that is something to think about. I do believe there is some help as we are looking at our middle school numbers, which we have all commented on as going up. I know where my daughters attended, our middle school counselor was amazing and met with every parent and child if they, you know, took the opportunity to do that. With more students, there may need to be more time, so that's just something I would say. I'm open to other comments by board members, but I am saying, middle school numbers going up, meeting with all eighth graders, that does take some time, so maybe something to think about. Just my comment.
Ms. Decatur? Ms. Young?
Thank you. Chairman Healy? I did have a note in here about the fire class, and wasn't there a note at the bottom that stated that if we don't fill it? So, how are we planning on, was there like a waiting list or something? Like, how are we planning on getting the students in that class?
Okay, well, okay, so first...
And where were they coming from?
Yeah, so first, we have to fund it.
Okay.
Okay, so that part we haven't done. And, yeah, I've asked the fire chief, he's going to come in front of you, okay? But I just think tonight was the right meeting, okay?
Okay, all right. And then the other, the other comment I had was, weren't we planning on having a work session for IB? Right?
IB, AP.
Yeah, and so, I'm seeing these. I would, I would like to get that information before I... This is on information or is it on action?
This is on for action. This is on for action.
Yeah, I want to have that work session to understand that better.
Madam Chair, regardless of what we do with any of the programs, we're not just going to cut it off at the knees and not give any of our current kids an opportunity to finish their coursework. So, I don't think it matters whether it's in here or not. It's not something that we're going to tackle. This is completely different than what we're going to study and when we're going to implement, if we're going to implement anything to be changed. So, I think we're, I think we're holding staff up by not getting this taken care of.
Thank you. Do you have any other?
Nope, that's it.
Dr. Chase? Or Ms. Egan, do you have any other comments? No, Dr. Chase?
So, I just want to make sure, I think Ms. Young commented on this, but last year, we had in our Program of Studies a note that said that if we can't, don't have enough students for the class, or if we can't find teachers for the class, that those classes may not be offered. Is that still the case? Okay, so, we should be good there. So, yeah, I just, just double-checking that that was still there. And my other thing is just to make sure that the Program of Studies is, the Accurate Program of Studies is on the website, so...
Mr. McOscar?
Nothing on the Program of Studies. I think it's been discussed by the board members pretty eloquently. Dr. Kizner, though, I do, I do think, and this is for the record, and that's why I'm saying it on the dais, I do think that we have some room to improve on our scheduling for the high schools. I think, I'm not talking about class sizes, you know, because we've all had that discussion about, hey, there's eight kids in this class, oh, by the way, it's calculus III, or calculus II, or, you know. So, I get it, but I do think across... But I do think across the division, we do have some room for improvement. And that's something that's been promised over the years that we discuss, and it's never quite made it to the board level. I don't know if that's maybe not the appropriate place for it. So I just ask that you please look into that sometime this year with your senior staff and try to come up with some, what are we doing right and what are we doing wrong, at least on it? Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. And along that line, I'd like to get some information about the parity among the schools. I mean, I agree, smaller classes are fantastic. But if we have a smaller class, if we have a class of 10, and then we have to have averages of 38, you know, who is that fair to? So I would like to know, you know, where the smaller classes are. I think sometimes these numbers may not be as straightforward as they appear, because sometimes we have blended classes where we may have, you know, a teacher teaching a, you know, two levels in one class. So it may show, you have a class of seven and a class of 10, but in reality, you know, the same time and the same teacher.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up, because that actually happens more often than I think people see, that you do blend a level three and a level four, for example, in the same. But we will provide you that. I guess, I guess my only comment is, if we set a number, and we go below that number, that could be interpreted as not good. And if we go above that number, that could be interpreted as not good. And what I'm just suggesting is, an average means you have variability. That's all I'm really saying. So not all the numbers, not all of the classes are going to have the same number. And, and, you know, I could talk about this all day long. But we will bring you forward the information you're seeking. I just get, I just get a little worried when we set a number, because we begin to, and I'm not saying you're thinking this way, I'm thinking that maybe some other school board would be thinking this way, that we're thinking more the number than the children. Okay? Because I know, for example, one of the classes I spoke to was a research class, a statistics research class. Eight students in that class. That's...
What school was that?
All the schools are the same to me. It was a high school. I couldn't find my way to Grafton today, because my way kept taking me to a flooded road. And finally, like, four times, I was going down a flooded road, so...
You had to change your phone.
I know we have a lot of schools, and I just stop at a school and say...
Got to throw the flip phone away.
Yeah.
Throw that phone in the river.
But my point really being is like...
Talk to transportation, they'll get you there.
If the objective maybe should be, how do we get more children, students into that class? Versus the other way of thinking is, if we only have eight, can we afford to have that class? Because that's a very important class for these eight young people, knowing what their pathway will be, just like we would have a class, and I hate to even use this example, for another, I won't even mention it, another group of children, because we know they need it. They need a small class. So I understand the budget balance, believe me. I understand, and I get it. I'm just, don't want you to take criticism, and I surely don't want our high school principals and school counselors to start taking away things because we're under a certain number. Okay?
My, my only concern is that I just want all the schools to have some kind of even keel in terms of what classes are being offered, and how many students are in those classes, because there are some areas in some high schools that have more programs than others. So I just want some type of equality. That's, that's my goal.
And many, many years ago, we did have a informal, maybe, standard, that if a class was going to be below 15, it had to be approved by the superintendent. I recall that. Because at that point, we had a lot of single-digit classes, and then we had other classes, you know, with much higher numbers. So I'm not suggesting we go back to that, but I, you know, agree with my, you know, my colleagues. I think we need to have some kind of parity, because I do, I understand the need for these classes, and particularly if students are going into certain areas, that they need to have, you know, this preparation. But I don't want to do it at the expense of other students who may be in a much higher class, because we, you know, we do have limited funding.
Right. And let me just, because you know me well enough now that I just feel like I want to finish a thought. Parity could be interpreted as equal. And a lot of our conversations, as I already talked about, a committee you started last year, is about equity. And I don't want us to sometimes confuse equity with equal. Because what equity would say, in a certain school, a group of children have, a class has been identified to be important for a group of students. At another school, that, it may be another class was identified to be, some of it is a result of the qualifications of the teacher. Okay? Sometimes we, for the five high schools, we may not have the credentials we need to offer everything. But when I hear the word parity, because I've been hearing that a lot here, it, that sometimes is in conflict with the term equity. And I'm not here to lecture, I'm just saying, in my mind, I'm wrestling with that term parity, because it almost says we want to treat everybody the same. And that's what I don't think we really want to do. Okay? You have some magnet programs in your schools, and, and that was a decision of previous boards, maybe some of you are on it. Okay? So it shouldn't surprise us greatly if you see certain percentages of kids in a certain program, because that's where the program's located. Now, it would be a good question to ask is, because I've seen this at some of the high schools, they don't offer that many AP classes. And that does raise a, bring to me, say, okay, why are those kids that are at that school have a very limited AP menu compared to one, because AP, I don't believe we transport, right? Is it, no? So I, we will talk about this over time, but parity...
And that's what that work session will do. It would help you understand what we're dealing with, what those programs have in sight.
And when I say parity, I, maybe I should say equal opportunity. I don't want a student not have the same opportunities because they're at one high school and not at another. Put aside, you know, the IB schools and the APX schools, but, but just, just generally. I know it's site-based, but I think there needs to be some type of review at your level or your senior staff's level about, you know, how these numbers are being set, particularly if they're closer to the single digits than the, you know, the double digits.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kader?
Yeah. Well, I would just add, because I, I feel like I'm probably on my own here. I wanted to applaud you in everything you just said, but you kept going, and then the time passed, so it would have been weird. But you made me want to give you an applause for, for all of your comments just now, so I thought I would just mention that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. No further discussion. We have a motion for approval of the 2019-2020 High School Program of Studies High School Course Catalog. If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10.02, approve the 2020-2029 CIP Large Project and Infrastructure Project Priorities. Dr. Chase, did you want to, or make a motion?
Yeah. I move that we approve the CIP priorities.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
A question. When I opened up the spreadsheet and I saw the Hartwood thing on here, it didn't say rebuild or renovate, it just says renovate. Did we change that?
Yeah. We were asked to do one or the other. And so we, I reached out to both board members who were on the Fab and asked what was the preference. I heard back from one, I did not hear back from the other. But we went with renovate, because there's a general feeling that we aren't rebuilding Hart, Ferry Farm. We, there's a general sort of feeling that rebuilding is not particularly popular. So that's, that's why that change was made.
So...
We just rebuilt Moncur on another site, and my constituents can't wait to get into it.
So I think it's different...
Ferry Farm wants to be rebuilt, too.
I think it's different, it's different strokes for different folks. Every project has its own, and we can't continue, I will not support continuing on with this tit-for-tat, seven board members, you got it, you can't have it, and, and this whole thing that's going on, this is a, this is a location against location, because you didn't get it, so you can't have it. I'm not going to continue to support that. You heard from me before I left the meeting. I said if it changes from a rebuild to a renovate, I will not support it. I spoke before I left the meeting. The meeting was recorded. I am, my, my opinion did not change. This is a very different circumstance than Ferry Farm. Now, if I would have heard point-blank from staff that Ferry Farm really required a rebuild, and I would have heard that the constituents of Ferry Farm majorly, majorly?
Majority.
All right. 20-hour drive. Supported a rebuild, I would have supported a rebuild. For the same reasons, I support a rebuild for Hartwood. I heard overwhelmingly from staff that Hartwood needs to be rebuilt for a boatload of reasons that I don't think we need to take the time again to go into. So, no, I don't support a renovate just because Ferry Farm got to renovate. That's not how we do things. That's not how I do things.
And I don't think we can send this over with a straight face. I don't think anybody on the Board of Supervisors is going to look at us and say, oh, sure, we're going to build, we're going to rebuild, or we're going to renovate a school that's on septic and water and outside of the urban services area. That, that kind of encourages more sprawl and all that other stuff. People say, oh, yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to build all these houses around Hartwood. Well, we don't want them there. We want them inside the urban services area where we can cluster them and, and support these subdivisions. And I'm sorry, but I'm just telling you, I'm not going to vote for this, because the Board of Supervisors are going to laugh their butts off at us.
I would note that the Board of Supervisors have asked us why we are proposing a rebuild of one elementary school plus another brand-new elementary school. So...
Well, I would just add, I also don't make decisions based on who's going to laugh or what they're going to ask. We have data and facts and figures that support the need for additional elementary schools, or at least we did, when I looked at it and decided that this was what needed to happen. I think we've had overwhelming information to support the additional elementary space. I also would just add that, well, we can, you guys can continue if...
Okay. Any other discussion? No. I would just like to note that I was at the Ferry Farms Town Meeting, and at that meeting, Mr. Haran very clearly stated that he was recommending a rebuild, that he thought a rebuild of Ferry Farms was economically the best way to go, that it needed a rebuild. And the community at Ferry Farms overwhelmingly spoke in support of a rebuild. Yet, we were told by the supervisors that there wasn't funding to rebuild Ferry Farms. I mean, otherwise Ferry Farms would be a rebuild this year, which is what it was planned for. So if the funding body is saying there's no money for a rebuild, I have no reason to believe that two years from now, there's going to be money for a rebuild. And we're saying that we need the renovation or the rebuild, if you want it to go that way, at Hartwood the same year that we want to open Elementary School 18. And the two of them together would be almost $100 million if we had a rebuild. So I just don't see that as being practical. My preference would be to rebuild both of them. But I'm trying to follow the, the guidance that we've been given. I think it's unfortunate that we are not rebuilding Ferry Farms. I'm not saying don't rebuild Hartwood, you know, because Ferry Farms didn't get rebuilt, but I want to be realistic and practical. And I can't imagine that there would be support from the funding body. And if, if they want to come back when they get this and tell us, we'll fund it, no problem, you know, this can always be changed. But I want to, I want to be practical. We know we're going to need Elementary School 18, and we have to open here in FY 2028, and we know we have to do something with Hartwood, also scheduled for 2028. So that's why I'm going to support this. There is a significant cost difference in rebuilding versus, you know, renovating. In a perfect world, Hartwood wouldn't have been on water and sewer to begin with, but it has been. We just spent, what, $750,000 for the sewer system at Hartwood. There wasn't any discussion then that we're going to be, you know, moving Hartwood, so we don't have to worry about it. And that was when Mr. Haran told us that the system would work in a few years, there would be some type of break. We didn't have the date, because he, his crystal ball wasn't working that day. But, you know, we made an investment there in that, in that septic, which fortunately was a good investment, because it's going to, you know, help keep it going for now. So I wish it were a perfect world, and we could give our 5% raises, and we could build what we want to build and, and move on. But unfortunately, funding is a restriction, and it's something that we have to deal with.
Madam Chair, did I hear that the Board of Supervisors have already passed their CIP with last year's, with our last year's list in it? Is this all or not?
I don't know.
Yes. Correct.
I said to all of you a letter this afternoon that I got from Mr. Foley. If you haven't had a chance, I would read it. It speaks to exactly what Irene just talked about.
Well, we still, we still have the right, and I would say the, the duty to send over our list to them. Whether they want to ignore it, you know, is up to them.
Yeah. They have, they've, they've canceled their, they've canceled all the oversight meetings and everything else. Yeah.
In the, in that vein, I do have a question of when we are getting these projections that we have promised not only ourselves, but the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Haran, I know, are they coming soon? Date? I mean, will we see them? I mean, we are going to receive on December 11th. I don't think that was the meeting that was canceled. I know I would like to look over those projections before we sit in front of that body arguing for whatever we pass, whether it is this, whether it is not. We have to have our argument. And I know many, we all may disagree, but I do believe we need to have data. As you all know, I am very concerned about those middle school numbers. If we go 3.5% and 2.2% every year for the next two or three, an elementary school will be an issue, but it's going to be a middle school. And I feel like if we don't start telling, I know this is a map for the future, but a 5% growth in middle school over a two-year period, we're at, what, 84%? Okay, we, you know, we start to get there. So for me, I know I will personally want to look those over, so I know what story we're telling and what our data is stating. I would just point out that that growth in middle school in four years will be high school. Right? And well, and that's what I'm saying, but also if, if, but also, so, right, so that continues to move. I don't think, as you know, I've supported that we send over High School 6 and Elementary 18. Those are the two I can definitely agree to. I believe that Hartwood, and I'm sure my constituents will scream when this, the number that's in the original one of the 30, you know, 31, you know, I may not like it, but if that ends up being, but if that ends up being where the growth is, my concern with Hartwood all along is, I have attended two meetings in my district about the water table being lowered and wells running out of water. I can tell you, cluster subdivision, all that stuff, that is happening in Hartwood. Now, whether they can stop it, whether they can't, I don't know. But that is of grave concern to me. And in a year where most of us will never think of the word drought, because I don't think I will ever say the word drought in this year, but some of us lived through a drought here in Hartwood, and we were on bottled water, and we had, and there were other issues. But that is of concern to me. That does not change. And that is something I believe we need to be very conscious of, that there are some differences. I will probably not be supporting these projects, and Mr. McCosker, and I know that this may come as part of what you said in there, too. I don't think we're taking over the best list. I know that you have some creative ways to do this, but I can't approve it how it is now, because I'm not sure these are the right, I'm not saying the numbers, but also, Mr. Haran, as you said, Phase 2, or, I can't remember, it was only 3 and 4, or 2, 3 and 4, that we have some number in there, but not great. I really don't want to go... some number in there, but not great. I really don't want to go over and say to the Board of Supervisors, this is how much we need, and be off twenty-two percent again. That's not going to go well with us. I want to take over hard numbers and when we need these things. I, I think our early childhood special education, I, I'm supportive of the one from before for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, you know, that, that timeframe, I think we have to see. But again, it comes down to data, and now that we will have separate facilities, maybe we can start to track pre-K numbers better and start doing, and I know we're trying and working on it. We, every time you do a set of numbers, hopefully you take lessons from that and you move from that. But I'm just not comfortable walking over because right now with this list, I'm not sure I have the data to say this is why. So, it is not any, for board members, but based on those reasons, I can't support it because I couldn't make the argument right now for why all of these are. Mr. Haran, that's not against you all either, I just feel like we need to say what happened this year.
So, I, I don't think I've said much, so, and I won't say much.
I know it's getting long.
Yeah, long, we have a long night ahead of us. You know, good points about everything. You know, the two things that I am supportive of are the first two things on the list. I, I, that hasn't changed for me. I think High School Six and Elementary School Eighteen, it will probably be together in Hartwood, in that area. I think it will be. I think, I don't think it's smart, and I didn't think it was smart rebuilding Moncur and then a mile down the road saying, yep, a mile up the road and then the old Moncur just sits there, you know?
That wasn't our choice.
It wasn't our choice, but it was, that's what happened. And then, oh, by the way, the new, the new, the new, the new site's going to be in Embry Mill in the middle of nowhere, right? So, so I was always okay with High School Number Six, and this is last year when, when Ferry Farm got, a year and a half, when Ferry Farm got pulled off the CIP by some board members that are still on the board here, the rebuild, and that was done on purpose, right? That was, we wanted to do the new system and make sure Ferry Farm went away, and, and I think, and that's how I felt, and I told you that, I told you all that. And I said, and revote a new, a new board's priority, and you did, right? So, I'm still good with Number One and Number Two. I think the Twenty-Sevens, the Twenty-Eights, the Twenty-Nines, I don't think the supervisors right now really, at this point, I think they've already, this year, they've written us off, right? I think, I think One and Two, I think we, we still, we still say that's a, that's a, that's a go. But what I did want to talk to the board about and make sure that we get at least an on verb or a non-committal, kind of a polling on that, the current phase of Ferry Farm is one point eight million over, after the detailed construction analysis. A good portion of that one point eight is, I think, is, is mechanical, which, you know, we've talked to Mr. Haran and some other folks about, an AC system is four hundred and fifty thousand, so I, I, so I think, I think we can come up with the money to support the one point nine or one point eight it's over, somewhere in there. And I think there may even be some efficiencies that they didn't talk about. So, I just wanted to see where the board members were at, Madam Chair, on a polling of, do we support making sure Ferry Farm gets its, if, you know, it is a renovation, we know that if we push it off for a rebuild, it'll never happen. The current, you know, remember the current renovation cost equivalent to Falmouth, Grafton Village is estimated at thirty million or so, right? In today's dollars, if we wait ten years, it'll be fifty million for the renovation and probably seventy-five for the, for, for a rebuild. That's just how it is. It's a five percent increase, plus it depends on how good the market is. So, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we start turning dirt. They need to know by December. I think that whether it's Hartwood or whether it's the addition, I think the Twenty-Seven, the Twenty-Eight, I don't think we get so wrapped up in that for, for this go-around. Maybe we just take the first two and say, hey, we stick with that. And then we discuss at length with the staff over, over the fall about, hey, do we, you know, what, what do we really want to do with, with Hartwood? What do we really want to do with the ten additions to the class for Fredericksburg Christian or North Star, or whatever we're calling it? You know, what are we going to do about making sure the South has those ten? Maybe, maybe that money goes down to the South. For Gary Melchers, maybe it goes to Phase Two and Ferry Farm. I, I, you know, I don't know. But what I do know is I do support the first two still. I think those are solid. I think the Board of Supervisors already has that data over there, and they, they know that we support those first two. And I think the board, in, you know, the fifty-meter target running at you right now is the Ferry Farm, how are we going to move forward with that? And that, we need to tell the, the board, the staff to do something by December, and we only have one meeting in December, I think it's the thirteenth. And so, that, I'm not saying that wouldn't be too late, but, so, I don't know if that's a poll of the board, or do we, do we, do we support paying additional money for the construction out of our own funding? That would be CIP infrastructure list. There's about two million dollars that are unencumbered right now off that list, and if, if it's a infrastructure project such as an air conditioning system or a generator that we have to move for the art class, or the music room, or the art room, then that is CIP infrastructure money. That's something that we could have assigned that our, last time we approved it. So, that, that's kind of where I'm at. I think that we can come up with a good portion of it on inner, you know, eight hundred thousand, six hundred thousand of infrastructure, and then the, the rest we could, and we still have two years to pay that bill as well. I think, Scott, and Scott will correct me if I'm wrong, at least, at least twenty-one is, we'd have to give the money up for the, the rest, the final twenty percent of the project or whatever, before opening. So, we have a little bit of time, I think, on the rest of the money. So, I know that was a long rambling of information.
Okay, so you, you want, you want to know whether this board wants to go forward with the proposed renovation to Ferry Farm with the original
Yes.
plans, at a, a cost of, what, one point one million?
One point eight.
One point eight million more than was originally budgeted?
Yes.
And to find the money either from the, the infrastructure list?
Yes.
Or I, I think Mr. Fulmer told us during our, our work session, that there would be some money, not, you know, a lot, but wasn't it four hundred-plus thousand from the state funds that came last year and about four hundred fifty that we expect from this year and carryover funds that is not committed. So, that's another potential.
And we'd have two infrastructure years, this year in June.
Alright, so this is unrelated to this capital project list, but I think it is important.
I can just clarify something for the public. It really, you're not asking for one point nine million, what, over what was budgeted. You're really staying at the budgeted number. The project
Right.
just ended up being.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Chase.
Okay, so I, I have two questions. The first relates to this CIP that we've spent quite a bit of time sort of going through the process. So, this question maybe is for Dr. Kizner or Mr. Haran. If we're only, only need to send two projects across the street, why have we been looking at all these projects?
Well, let, let me just say, you already sent those two across the street.
Right, right.
Okay, you made that decision.
Right.
At this point, if I could just be brutally honest, based on the email, everything I know, there is no sense of urgency to move anything across the street at this point.
Great, that, that's great. That, that answers my question. And then my second question is, I'm a little confused about Ferry Farm because the original project, I thought we heard that there were teachers who had a problem with the way the library was designed. So, I'm not quite sure what I'm agreeing to fund if we go with that previous, the previous plan. So, I'm, I'm just, just want some clarity for that.
So, that's a good question. So, the, when we discussed it with the architects, they, there were, there were some concerns that the board had, Ms. Healy and some, some, they said the art room, we don't want to build an art room and a music room on a permanent renovation that is under ed specs, because that was part of the, that was part of the deal. So, they were going to look at that, and then the second thing they were going to look at is, is there, is there a way to make the library in its originally, you know, that open library concept, can they close that up and make that a workable library? Or do they have to go back? But either way, they were around the one, you know, it's around, do we want to fund around one point eight for, this, this may save us money or this may cost us more money, but I can't say that. They're going back to the drawing board on just those three issues, but everything else was, was staying the same.
Mr. McCosker, if I could, I am willing to get more information, but I can tell you tonight, I don't know if I'm going to commit to one point nine, and I'm not trying to be, I don't, I don't like to not know what I'm kind of agreeing to. I am certainly willing to hear more information. I'd like to understand, like Dr. Ch, and my other concern always is, is when we say, here's how much you can spend, it will be spent. I don't want to lose some of our value, you know, I, of the creative, I don't want to stop our creative thinking to hit a number. Does that make any sense?
Makes sense to me.
I think that, but I'm willing to hear more and, and consider that, but I would certainly like to hear more from Mr. Fulmer as well, because we'll need to know where it comes from as well. I know you've talked about the three R list. We have already approved that as a board. I think if you want to make changes to it, we would have to bring that back as well. And I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm just, I do think we need to crop, you know?
Right.
Can, can we call the question on what we're, on the, on the issue itself, and then we can maybe discuss having a work session on how we're going to pay for what he wants to have done? Because these are two separate things, and we have to have announcements and everything up to the public about what we're talking about.
Let me just say, I think, I think what Mr. McCosker is asking for is, you know, what direction the board, you know, it looks like they want to, to move in, because by next month, if we're going to go forward with the contract, we're going to have to have a decision. Now, if, if we need to have a work session for that, we can schedule that, but it's going to have to be before the meeting. Perhaps we could have a special call meeting.
Okay.
But I think that's all he's trying to ask us to do. But I, it is, it's not on the list, but the reason it's not on the list is because it had already been approved. And ironically, it was approved in the amount that we, you know, the project was approved, it's just that the bids came in higher.
Right, so we have to get the board to figure out how do we handle it? But that's not part of what we're voting on right now, right?
That's right.
So...
But, but it's...
I, I took this opportunity to, right, to...
I know, and I know it's late, but it is something that, you know, it, this has been going on for years with Ferry Farms.
But we can't make that decision now without, we can't even, yeah.
Well, but we can talk about, you know, tell us. Ms. Hazard says she wants more information. If we can tell the superintendent what information we want, then he can be prepared to have it for a work session, and then we can have a work session with a special call meeting and make a decision then. But I, I suggest that it be before the December thirteenth meeting, because I think that's going to be, or December eleventh.
Because we have that meeting with the Board of Supervisors right before, so it would have to be another day.
So, so that's, or perhaps people can send their questions.
Isn't that the oversight meeting?
Ms. Hazard, if you, if you have any specific requests, as well as anybody else for information, send it to us.
Could I just ask, Mr. McCosker, Mr. McCosker, I know you said, and I tried to follow, but you know this project, like, we, we know our districts.
Right.
I know you said that you all had, and I watched you all, you had a great conversation going in there. For the uninitiated, I would love a breakdown of the conversation that was had by you all in there, because you were saying, well, we were kind of moving this stuff. I'm just a visual, I just did kind of understand it.
That's fair enough. Why don't we just send it up, Dr. Kizner, why don't you send an update of our way forward on the, you know, that's fine, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to, I'm trying to talk about it, because we just went to a poll and it went three, four, and then we just move on, right? But I didn't want to do that. So, okay. Let's just, give us an update on the, with, with Mr. Haran and the VDMO and, on the costs and what we're going to do, and what are the options, and then we'll just take it from there.
Do we want to have a special call meeting, and we could maybe agree on the date now? Or we can...
We're going to have to have a work session to be followed by a special call meeting.
Yep, yep.
Because that does have a sense of urgency. If we want to get Ferry Farm to open up on the twenty, a decision has to be made sooner than later.
And they're, and they're good questions.
Can I get my comment?
Yeah.
On ten oh two? I mean, yep. So, I am not going to meet on this again. I met several times. I want us to vote. And send it over, yeah, on the CIP, yeah. And send it over because regardless if they accept it or not, or whatever, they met already, this is our duty, and we met, and so we are sending it over. Period.
Call the question.
Alright.
Call the question.
There you go. Alright, all in favor of the motion to approve the FY twenty, FY twenty-nine CIP large project and infrastructure project priorities, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 No.
Did you just say, say aye, say aye?
No, she said, are you saying, she said, are you saying aye? Yeah, I said aye.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
No. Alright, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes four to three.
No, no, it wasn't, she said, did you say aye?
And we'll talk at the end of the meeting about scheduling that work session and special call meeting. This brings us to information items, and I have a suggestion. Unless there's anything that, well, if there's anything someone wants to move to action, we can, but on the other ones...
One's been requested.
Well, one's been requested to go to action. And, and...
I mean, Ms. Massey's been here all night.
Yes, where's Ms. Massey?
Yes, but other than that, if people have questions, we can just send them to the superintendent, because we do still have a closed session after this. So, eleven point oh one, approve an early Head Start expansion grant application for three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in ongoing funding and eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars in startup costs to serve twenty additional infants, toddlers, and pregnant women. Alright, any discussion of this item? Any discussion?
Ms. Massey? Ms. Massey, do we have space? That's going to be the question from me.
It's, it was in the background material.
I just, but I think it's important to have it.
It's proposed to be in the, the former Fredericksburg Christian School.
Okay, just, I just, this was discussed, I know, at ours and at Head Start, and I think this is important for, to be, we have room.
At this point, for the next couple of years, we do have room.
Yeah.
At the south, I was going to move one of the classrooms from the south campus to the north. Instead, we would replace that with this one, so that classroom would not move. If we need it for early childhood special ed in the future, then we can move this program to home base if we need that. But at this point, that classroom is not needed for early childhood special ed next year.
Please speak up, please.
I'm so sorry. This classroom is not needed for early childhood special ed next year. There will be about three classrooms in the Melchers complex that will not be needed for ECSE next year.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I'm just really confused. I have sat in so many meetings where I have been told that the Northern Head Start Center would, Early Childhood Special Ed Head Start Center was going to be full, and that we needed to put an addition on by, like, yesterday. And so, I'm, I'm really confused about this, I've got to say. I, I don't understand.
Any other? Ms. Young?
Yeah, so, how long did you know that this is what you were planning on doing?
Very short time.
The grant was put in October, it was released on the RFP, whatever they call that. It was released October twenty-ninth, and it's due November thirtieth.
Yeah, this is a great program, I think, to help teenagers to pursue a better life, but are we impacting our Head Start program that is going to be in the north?
No, ma'am. Again, I was already planning on moving, we have two early child, early Head Start classes at the Melchers site. I was planning on moving one of those north. This grant will allow us to put this classroom north, not move the other one, which classroom is not needed next year for early childhood special ed. So, this will, grant will give us funds to not only put the classroom there, but to purchase playground equipment, as startup cost.
So, I understand that the, is it the RASCB that lost their funding from the state?
RASCB.
RASB.
RASB. Community Services Board.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the document that you sent us to read. It's in there.
That they stopped funding a program for teen pregnant, that was done back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, should we not be including, like, the board, the Board of Supervisors to look at this? So, in case, like, when this grant runs out, do we have to support it, like, every year after that? Or do you have to, like, re-up the grant? How, how does that work?
Early Head Start is just like Head Start funding. We re-up it every year. They still, what the feds give us. If we lose that funding, then that's your decision what to do with that program. Yes, ma'am. They still, what the feds give us. If we lose that funding, then that's your decision what to do with that, um, program. Yes, ma'am.
Teachers lined up for this?
Not until we get the grant. This, I need it approved by you guys first, and then it's a very competitive grant. So whether we get the funding or not, it's going to be up to the Office of Head Start based on our grant application.
So, um, I think you said something about students can transfer. Like why would they transfer to like say North Stafford? Has, I'm, I'm assuming has been discussed with you, right, Dr. Kizner?
Right. So you, you, I know you know these kids. The early Head Start kids are in our program two years. The Head Start kids are in our program one year. So, so the word transfer, I just want to make sure you understand, like they graduate and they end up in kindergarten.
I'm talking about.
She's talking about the high school students.
High school students.
Cause right now, most of the high school students who are pregnant don't have transportation. And the hours of, of high school don't make it easy to get your child to Head Start unless you have.
Are these numbers included in, are these numbers going to be included in the, say for example, North Stafford in addition to the ones that they already have? Like say 20, I don't know how many students we're talking about.
And neither do I until, you know, people get pregnant. So we don't know that at this point. If North Stafford has room for transfers, then they could easily utilize North Stafford as their school right next door to this facility.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Any other?
I just have a question. So, so, so we almost have a half a million dollars already budgeted in 19 for this program? Chris? So, so, well, it says grant, but it says 400, I'm counting $464,000 is already budgeted in FY 19 in 020 for this program?
Early Head Start already, we already have two classes. That's about a $480,000 grant, yes.
But it's grant money, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is not new money. This is already?
This would be expansion money added to what we already have. It would be coming from the feds. The local match is going to be utility costs that you're already paying that we are not using as local match. So there is no additional cost to the board for this grant.
Okay. So you're saying, what you're saying is there's no extra money. We don't have any local match. And if it is, cause it says the required local match of 76,000. So up top on here, on this says amount budgeted, it's already, but that is not for this program. That is for another. That is not for the requested agenda item. So $464,000 is not for the requested agenda item? Why would it be there if it's not for the requested agenda item?
Where do you see 464,000?
Well, I'm adding 381,75, and then 83,000, and then 83,500.
Oh, yes, sir.
And then it's for, for a total of 464. So I'm just trying, it's confusing me. So it's saying it's budgeted for $464,000.
For FY 19.
For FY 19, and then you're asking, that's what we need to do. So what do, so what is this?
It is not already budgeted. No, sir.
That should have been, it should say no.
So the budget should, should say no.
It should say no, but I think the, the thing I checked was, was there a local budget funds? And the answer is no.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to defer to Ms. Hazard on this. I'm, I'm, I'm really, really confused. And so I'm going to, I'm going to be voting no on this if we're trying to go to.
I think my comment is this allows us to apply for it. If we get these grant funds, it can come back to the board for us to say, yes, we want them Head Start or no, we don't. But the, the answer will be, no, we don't get any additional funds if we don't apply. And it seems like it's an opportunity.
I, I think some of these grants, if you apply, you have to do it. So I just want to make sure that that.
Okay. I guess I don't know.
There are some of these grants that if you apply, you have to.
I think when you're making the application, you're saying, you know, yes, you want to.
And the second thing, just to finish off my thought was, and I, I do agree with Ms. Ms. Young. I'm, I'm just a little confused on, you know, we, we said that we were going to have, have 20 early childhood special education classrooms filled because we needed them. And so the Board of Supervisors funded us $10 million. And, you know, we got to do it now. And oh, by the way, we, last year with Dr. Benson, now we needed another 10, 10 million, another 10 classes or five, six million. So, so that's the second part of my confusion and my frustration. I don't understand.
Let me take a stab at it. If there are children with a disability under, older than age two and under age five, there is no waiting list. All right? By law, we are serving them today. Okay? We could be serving them center base. We could be serving them home base, but we are serving them. I don't know the conversations that happened last year. Maybe the conversations, I'm just speculating now, were about other early childhood children without a disability. So I just wanted to clarify because I know we have talked about, I've heard that we have waiting lists for other children that do not have special needs. And then there is some, I'll just say again, speculation that when we open up the north campus, there's a high probability that families that did not want to bring their children to the south campus are now going to be interested. So I know Stafford, we just got our special ed evaluation. We did extremely well. We were not criticized for not serving early childhood special ed students. So I don't know how anybody could have projected that you were going to have a waiting list for children with disabilities because we don't identify those children until age two or three, depending on the agency that's doing it. So I, again, I'm, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure everybody who's listening, if you have a disability and you, I mean, you have a child with a disability, we are currently serving you. There is no waiting list for those children.
I guess my concern is, my understanding was that early childhood special education is, the students who qualify for that is a growing population and that it is continuing to grow. And my understanding from those meetings that were before you got here were that because that was growing, we needed to have more space. And, uh, Mr. Haran informed us that the addition that was proposed to put 10 classrooms at, um, the North Star, or whatever we're calling it, will cost $590,000 a classroom. And so to, that, that's quite an expensive set of classrooms to hand it over to something that we are not required by law to provide. So I just have some concerns about that and, and some confusion because I was under the impression that it was going to be full when it opened. And so I'm just, I, I, I don't think I'm going to be able to support this because of that, that confusion that I have.
And Dr. Chase, to answer your question, the north campus is going to be full when we open it. Whether we move our early Head Start classroom from the south north, or whether we fill it with this one. For next year, we have three classrooms in the south that will be open that will not be needed for early childhood special ed based on their predictions right now. One of those could stay our early Head Start classroom down there. If the next year that classroom is needed, these students, we can apply to the federal government to move them to a home base program that are in a center base. So we could, you know, do that. There, there's several options. We could turn the money back in a year's time and say, we, we can't do this anymore. There, there are all kinds of options, but in the meantime, we're going to have an empty classroom or two or three at the Melchers complex sitting empty. And this would give us a way to add a playground to the north for the younger children in early childhood special ed as well as.
And what if your predictions are wrong?
If they need all three classrooms, then we'll apply to move it to center base or into home base.
Well, I share Dr. Chase's confusion because I remember on many more than one occasions, this board was told that we will every year need more classroom space for the, the special ed preschool. That, and, and I, I see a shake of the head over here, that, that it is growing. There is nothing that would stop that need. I also recall being told, and I may be mistaken here, but that when we open the north campus, then it would be full. And then it was going to be half Head Start and half early special ed. Now, when the naming committee had its meeting for the first time, I heard, oh no, there's only going to be nine Head Start and 10 early childhood special ed, and we're just going to have an empty classroom. Because, and, and I'm sure Mr. Haran will remember, you may remember, I questioned that because I said, why isn't it going to be full? Like we've been telling everybody it's going to be full. Well, I, I just have to ask, when did we know about this grant? And all of a sudden, we happen to have an empty classroom that we can, you know, fill with this space. I mean, if we didn't know anything about the grant until October.
29.
29. That's the first time we ever heard of it. So.
Well, we knew that the funding was coming. It's just it hadn't been released yet. The, the Congress had appropriated funding for early Head Start expansion back last, last year. And we were just waiting for the RFP to come out, but we didn't know whether we would qualify for it, whether it would be home base services allowed, center base, would it would be allowed and that kind of thing.
That, that, I mean, I, I was shocked to hear we were going to open not full when all my expectation was we were going to be full.
I'm not aware that we're going to have less than 12, um, early childhood special.
I'm just making a comment here. This is something that I didn't understand and I, you know, I raised, I think I raised it to, to Dr. Kizner as well. You know, I thought we were going to open full. That's what I've been telling people. That's what I think this board has been telling people. Then all of a sudden, we find out we're not going to be full. And now it's like, well, we can be full, but we're going to have a program that is not, not a mandated program while we know we're going to have an increase in need for, for the special ed preschool. I, I just, I'm, I'm reluctant to start a program, you know, beginning at the infant level that we're not going to be able to follow through on. So, and, and I understand these, these, you know, children are, infants are eligible for up to five years. So I, you know, that, that's my concern.
I just don't want there to be any misinformation that the north campus is going to open totally full with 12 early childhood special ed classes and eight Head Start and one early Head Start. There are 21 classrooms up there.
Okay. That's, that's not what I remember from the naming committee meeting. Cause I remember questioning Mr. Rand. So maybe, maybe those numbers have changed since, um, since then. Okay. Is that, is that what you said during the naming committee? Perhaps I, I misunderstood because I was told it was going to be nine Head Start and, and 10 early childhood special ed, and that we would have the two extra classrooms. I knew we were going to have one, but there would be two empty classrooms. So that's, and I immediately asked Dr. Kizner about it.
If I could just add one thing, going to the grants, okay? I, I just want to make the statement, then I'll, then I'll try to be quiet. These are children that are high at risk. They will be in our schools most likely when they turn age five in kindergarten. You will spend a lot more money at that time if we don't provide early services. The research is compelling on this. I could, so if we could just go back to what the grant is, um, and each year you have the option to say, no, it's a one-year agreement and, and you have to get, um, it has to renew. So I just want to make that point because I don't want to lose sight of that, that we may not, this grant I know is very competitive. Okay? If we get it, I applaud the grant writers, but there's a lot of communities. I was at the, I think I told you my letter, I was at the early childhood meeting last week, the task force, and there's many communities going for this grant. This I will tell you, we do have more and more children. 60% of entering kindergarten children statewide have been determined not to be ready for kindergarten. Okay? And a high probability, it increases greatly for children who are born to young mothers and other categories. So I just, this is why we're writing the grant. Okay? I understand the space issue. We are sharing with you. Regardless of what was said in the past, on the south campus, there will be a classroom next year if we get this grant. Okay? Um, and that's the only thing that she's asking is permission to move forward.
But the grant says the classroom's going in the north.
Right. So we won't move the south classroom north. This grant will go north. The south classroom will stay in that room that's available next year. Again, if we need that classroom for early childhood special ed the year after, or the year after that, or the year after that, we can always move these children to home base services.
So one more question. Did you say you're advertising in the Freelance Star?
Am I advertising in the Freelance?
Freelance Star for the, the list for where you're going to get the teenage mothers. I read that there are several places, but including the Freelance Star.
Yes, ma'am.
They're going to find this information in the Freelance Star.
They will find Head Start information, registration information there.
So one of my questions and my concern has always been where we are finding the, the mothers and the individuals. But I did see some information about, um, social services and things of that nature where these teenage mothers are coming from and, um, the ones that are homeless. So that, that's good, but I don't know if some mothers are looking in the Freelance Star.
No. And honestly, our, our pregnant teens, we mostly get from the school nurses and from the counselors.
I'm sorry, what?
Most of our teen, um, mothers that we get referred are from counselors or school nurses.
Counselors and school nurses.
At the high schools and middle schools.
So the, just back to the budgeted though. So is, is that wrong? So we need to cross all, that should all be zeros, right? Under budgeted?
It's not requiring, I put a no for requiring local funds. I don't know why it popped up that way. It should be no. They're not budgeted funds.
Okay. So that's. But the local match is, I think that was meant to show.
Already budgeted. It would not be extra.
I think that's what that was meant to show is right now in the budget is the, I'm sorry, the 300, whatever that number is. And then the local match of the 83.5 are already funded. So.
No, no, they're not. The, the, um, startup funding would, we would get this year to put in the playground and those things. And then the class would start with the next school year, which would be the 381,000.
Yeah, that is confusing. And I'm sorry, since, since this didn't come to, since this didn't come to Head Start, because you all didn't know it till after the Head Start Policy Council meeting. I'm sorry. I usually would know much more about this agenda item, but it did not come up at the last.
The agenda item is incorrect where it says that the 381,575 dollars is budgeted. It says yes. You're saying no. I, I understand.
What is budgeted is the local match.
Right. Okay. That makes sense. I think because of the timeliness, whether we vote it up or down, we have to give some indication. So I would actually ask the board to consider moving this to action as the first motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to move this to action. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Oh, why not? It's only 10 after 10. We've got a lot more to do tonight.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I don't, I don't object to moving it to action.
Right. So, I mean, I figured that we need to go.
Moving to action, right?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion?
Then I'll go ahead and ask that, uh, the approval of the early Head Start expansion grant application.
Second.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. No discussion, right? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McCosker? Ms. Young?
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion passes five to two.
All right. That brings us to 11.02, approve the renewal of an annual maintenance and support contract with EduPoint Educational Systems for the Synergy Student Information System in amount of $208,878 from budgeted FY 19 funds.
Move that we approve.
Is this, this is information?
Then I don't approve that we approve.
Okay. If anybody has any questions, unless they're burning, send them to Dr. Kizner. All right. 11.03, approve the award of a service contract to Corbett Technology Solutions, Inc. of Mechanicsville, Virginia in the amount of $200,290 using budgeted FY 19 operating funds for the installation of emergency notification strovelights in all school cafeterias. Any?
I do, I do have a question on this because the attachment. Well, I think that the board should look at this.
And you can get us the answer. Or we can discuss it if you want.
All I just wanted to say is the priority that is attached to this agenda item. I just want to make sure, I wanted to check with Mr. Haran. Number four and number five are being combined? Is that phase one and phase two of this project? I just want to understand because I know it's in priority order. Have we done one, two, and three?
Yes, ma'am. It was a mistake on my part to not include an updated attachment that gave you the current status.
That's what I wanted.
So I apologize for that. But the current status of the priorities before that are underway. One's been funded. It was within the superintendent's authority to fund. The second, we're getting pricing on. The third, we're also getting pricing on. We plan to bring that to the school board with, with the superintendent's approval. And then priority four has been combined with priority five. It's together and that's what we have today. We had that price ready to go. So we felt it prudent to bring to the board for consideration. But I'll have that updated attachment to you next time you consider. But I'll have that updated attachment to you next time you consider this.
Can you actually send that ahead of time? It may answer the question that I would be sent, which I think you know what it is.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, I can.
If anybody has any more questions, send them to Dr. Kizner, he'll show the answers with all of us. All right, next item, eleven point oh-four, approve North Star Early Childhood Center as the name of the new early childhood special education slash head start North Campus.
She has a long drive home.
Formerly the Fredericksburg Christian School. Now, keep in mind, we have not yet acquired this school, but we hope to acquire this school at the end of the month.
There is a date, right? Almost?
Yes, at the end of the month. All right, this is on for, for information.
Was it on for information? Oh, okay, all right.
All right, anybody have any questions, send them to Dr. Kizner. Want to thank Ms. Young for participating on that naming committee.
Thank you. Right, I just want to, ooh, go ahead.
You go ahead, maybe you'll answer my question.
No, not really, this is something else.
Okay, I'll ask. Okay, of all of the people on the thing, I'm curious to know, like, what the split was between the first choice of North Star and the second choice of Palmer Hayden Early Childhood Center, because I...
One, it was one person. The historian brought it to our attention, and we went over it, and, yeah, everybody liked the North Star. But what came up was, though, that they wanted to, I think we need to appoint a committee to consider updating the name to the South location, because several names came up, including Palmer Hayden. But we recognized when naming the North location, that there needs to be a need for a committee to represent the South, so I wasn't sure if some of the board members that are from the South wanted to participate in that committee. You know, Dr. Chase and Holly.
Either way.
Holly Hazard, oh, you're not from the South?
No.
Okay, yeah, so, but, yeah, and I guess the name that came out, five to one, I think, how many people were there?
I'm not even sure there was a vote, I think it was fairly unanimous.
Unanimous, that it...
The Historical Society representative liked...
Even liked it.
Hayden Palmer, but she also liked North Star as well. And, and part of the discussion, to follow up on Ms. Young's comments, the, you know, the discussion centered around the fact that the Melrose Complex houses a number of facilities and different programs, and that the, you know, the early childhood and the head start may want to have their own identity and their own name. So we can maybe put that on the agenda for the next, next month, when this comes back to us, okay? All right, eleven point oh-five, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations, as reviewed by the Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services.
So, can we not move this to action, like, why do we have to...
Well, under our policy, it comes for, for information twice, and then it comes for action. And Dr. Parrish isn't here this evening anyway, so send your questions to Dr. Kizner.
We are all trained by now to send the questions to Dr. Kizner.
Right, but I feel, I feel it prudent for me to repeat that, I'm a broken record. All right, the next regular meeting of the school board is December eleventh at two thousand eighteen at seven PM. However, we do have the meeting before that with the supervisors, correct, Missy?
Yes, we have a list there with all the meetings.
So many, well, these are advisory.
Is that, was that canceled, that advisory committee, though?
Where, where is?
The joint...
I don't, I don't see it. This is, this is...
December eleventh.
We had the eighth and tenth meetings.
Oh, December eleventh, go to the next meeting. Joint work session, school board, board of supervisors, okay.
Okay, and that's at five o'clock. Now, we do need to have FOIA training.
Talk to Dr. Kizner about FOIA training.
I'm sorry, this is just...
We can brief him, we can brief him.
No, this is just ironic. We need to have FOIA training.
Do you want to go to closed session?
Well, no, we need to talk about FOIA training, so if you all would come back, so we could talk about it, I think that would be helpful.
Who all is here?
Well, we have Irene, did Irene leave? Irene leave?
Irene's gone.
She's gone?
Yeah, she's gone.
Yeah, a while back.
All right, Ms. Hazard, is she coming back?
She's...
She has to, she'll calculate it, is it?
Well, actually, we're going to need three for Ferry Farms. Yes.
Yeah, oh, I thought you were...
All right, is, can someone buzz Ms. Hazard and ask her to come back?
Ms. Hazard, Ms. Hazard.
Please come to the front of the, please come to the front of the plane.
I don't know.
All right, well, let's start our discussions, if she disagrees, we'll...
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you were reading in.
No, no, we're talking about FOIA training for the board. And this is, this is coming because we received a complaint that, that there may have been a violation of FOIA. And in response, we're going to have FOIA training for the board. And Dr. Kizner has worked with a presenter who is willing to come and give us two hours of FOIA training, and also to discuss roles and responsibilities of the school board, if you want to extend it to that.
I'm sorry, why am I being punished? I did not, why am I being punished with FOIA training?
You're being enriched.
Okay.
Are we all being punished?
Yeah, I didn't do anything.
I know, I've been through it several times, I know the rules, okay?
All right, so, if you notice, there's big yeses by my name, so I'm good to go. What was, did you pick a date? I'm sorry.
December tenth, we were looking, no, is December tenth a Monday?
December tenth is what you...
Yeah, is that a Monday? Okay, I didn't know, that was Monday.
If we look at December, Monday the tenth.
You're good, Ms. Decatur.
December tenth, he could...
You've already got yeses and noses.
Yeah.
You have a lot of yeses, only one no, Ms. Young.
All right.
But I know you could be here.
We, we can give her the memo.
Okay, cool.
If you, if you don't mind missing it.
I just put some no's, because I need some no's, I can't be like Dr. Chase, that yes is all across the whole thing.
Can we just agree on December tenth?
Hey, December fourteenth, I put no.
That's when the presenter...
Okay, I'll try to be here. Ten.
Five o'clock to December tenth.
Yep, sometime five o'clock.
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Yeah.
Will you be providing food for five o'clock?
Oh, food? Okay, I'll be here.
What is the day of the week of January twelfth, please?
January twelfth?
Yeah, I'm already on the next one.
Those are all Saturdays.
Oh, they're all Saturdays, thanks.
That's, that's for the retreat. Well, we still need to have two other work sessions, and if we want to do a marathon, we can combine the, the one on the three program reviews and our policies with Ferry Farms, but if, we're going to have to do Ferry Farms sometime before the eleventh.
Ferry Farm, sorry. The only person that needs to be in Ferry Farm is the way. All right, let's be serious, we're...
Sure.
Well, what about on the tenth from seven to eight? I mean, compared to tonight, that's going to be a short night.
December the eighth?
Five to eight, what about that? If we're all here already...
That works for me.
Yeah.
Five to eight.
Well, we may not, we may not need that much time, but we can schedule it for that, if we finish early, then we'll get an early out.
So we do Ferry Farm from seven to eight?
Yeah, on the tenth, I mean, it's not much before the eleventh, but I think, would that give us enough time?
Yeah.
To go forward with the plans for the contract?
I think so.
All right, so, so, all right, check off Ferry Farm, check off FOIA training, that leaves us with the three program reviews and our policies.
Is that on the eighth or the tenth?
Do you want that to be December?
Can we do that all on the Saturday?
Which one? For you?
No, the three program reviews, the AP, IB, and APPX.
You wanted to focus on those three reviews, nothing else?
Correct.
Well, we wanted to do that, but we have holidays coming up, and our schedules are getting full. But if, if anybody wants to pick a date, I see the twelfth, but that would give us three days in a row.
That's me, Saturday?
That's, that's a lot of togetherness.
That's a lot of love.
This is a good thing, togetherness, I mean, we're born...
The twelfth, the twelfth is not great for me, so I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but that twelfth, I did put possible, but that's going to be a...
Well, I see a significant, well, let's see...
I mean, if you have to, we can, I may not be there the whole time, though.
If somebody wants to do it the week before Christmas, we've got...
Holly will be studied up anyway.
How about, how about, like, earlier? How about December fourth?
December fourth?
You know, the sixth... Oh, that means, okay, I will have to do it again.
Ms. Healy?
Ms. Pam is a, is a no, I could do it, that I have to...
The sixth is now an option, because the legislative reception that was...
I was, I was going to make that comment as well.
I will do the yes on December fourth.
When does, when does that meeting change from?
December third, which is the same line as the choice...
Six is...
Oh, God. We're really going to get to know each other in December.
Yeah, but nobody said anything about the sixth yet.
All right, fourth, fourth or sixth?
I don't care.
Does anybody care?
It's Taco Tuesday or Happy Hour Thursday, so...
I'll, I'll do the fourth, and then I'll just come.
All right, Ms. Young said she can do the fourth, so the fourth.
I will just change.
The fourth will be the three program reviews and our policies. All right, then that brings us to the team building retreat.
But what time is that meeting? On the fourth, what time?
Stab me now.
Why don't we say five thirty, because it's hard, harder for people to come at five?
Ridiculous.
That works for five thirty.
One, two hours?
It's a party. We're at night.
An hour and a half.
Well, right before that, probably.
Hey, guys, Tuesday, December fourth, is the Board of Supervisors holiday party.
But it's seven to nine.
What time is it, seven? Well, we're going to meet at five thirty to...
We'll be done. You just come in dressed up.
Okay.
Or not.
So, so the fourth is five thirty?
I mean, we can change it to six, it really doesn't matter to me.
I don't care, I was just...
Let's just leave it at the...
I know, I was just thinking, we did just get that invitation, I knew that date sounded familiar.
Yeah, I want some pillows out there.
And for the Saturday, I'm good for the twelfth, if everyone else is.
Why are you all still here?
Except for we keep picking days that...
I'm sorry.
You've got to know here.
Why are they here? Do we need them? Why are we not sending them home?
Well, because they enjoy our meetings, we're so entertaining, right?
Well, you know what, I'm glad you said that, Lisa and Pam will stay, but all of you rest here, seriously, go home.
Lisa, good night.
Yeah, because they're, they're going to join us in closed session, that's why.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, guys.
Come in ten minutes later, ma'am.
Thanks for your patience.